So since it's 1 o'clock, I think that we can begin. I wanted to just make a few comments about the schedules that we're going to be seeing going forward. Like the last time around, we are going to have a longish review session and then a short meeting on Wednesday. What we're seeing is a clearing through of applications that were being worked on by the department during the period of time when Euler was suspended. And so I thank the commissioners for your understanding of the fact.
Madam Chair, or are you on mute?
No. Oh, mute. Is that better? Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we were hearing you fine.
So I thank you that we're going to have a couple of longer meetings like this. We also know that as we are certifying projects now, that they are going to be coming back to us after they've made their way through the community board and the borough presidents. And Ryan and his team are already planning to see how we can space our public hearings. But I do anticipate that come next year, we are going to see some longer public hearings. I also mention that because even though we have a number of items on the agenda today, we nonetheless thought it important to give a special presentation. This is on the retail activity study that was conducted by the department. This was a follow-on study. And given the timeliness and given how discussions about retail so frequently are part of our deliberations in our planning commission work, we thought that it did make sense to take the additional time. So Ryan, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, November 2nd. As the Chair alluded to, before we begin our regular agenda, I will have Dylan Sandler of DCP's Housing Economic Development Division present on retail activity in New York City. Dylan, you can take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dylan Sandler. I'm a senior planner in the Housing and Economic Development Division at City Planning. And I wanted to share with you some recent work that we've done to explore retail activity across New York City neighborhoods as the city was coming out of the shelter-in-place regulations from COVID. So next slide, please. So we really wanted to focus on what was happening in July of this year as the city was lifting the shelter-in-place regulations to understand which businesses were reopening, which businesses appeared to be closed, and where we were still seeing vacancy in the retail sector. And we also saw this as an important point in time to gather information about the retail sector and retail activity to use as a baseline to help us monitor recovery in the coming months and in the coming years. Next slide, please. And this also builds on past research that we've done at DCP. So most recently, in 2019, we released a report focused on storefront vacancy, looking at 24 neighborhoods across New York City. And for this most recent survey in July, we looked at the exact same 24 neighborhoods to understand what had happened relative to this pre-COVID baseline. Next slide, please. Stepping back a little bit to pre-COVID industry trends, one of the things we've seen in terms of longer-term employment trends is that within the storefront businesses, food and beverage has grown really dramatically over the last couple of decades. Additionally, we've seen some growth in the service sector, particularly focused on personal care, like salons. But dry retail has been fairly stagnant in the city and even declining in recent years. Next slide. We conducted these surveys during a two-week period in mid-July. So this was between July 7th and July 17th. And this was during Phase 3 of the New York Forward reopening plan. And we decided to conduct the surveys at this time because most storefront businesses were allowed to reopen by Phase 3. So this includes food and beverage businesses, retail stores, and many service businesses. But the one notable exception here is that gyms and fitness-related facilities were not yet allowed to open indoors at this period in time. Next slide. This map shows the location where the surveys were conducted. So these were in all five boroughs. And we tried to find a diverse range of retail typologies that looked at a range in terms of demographics of the neighborhood, transit accessibility, and density. We did focus on pedestrian-oriented corridors, so we didn't really look at shopping malls and more auto-oriented retail corridors. And we also focused on areas that had stores on both sides of the street that were double-loaded corridors. Next slide. For the surveys, we categorized businesses according to these three broad buckets of dry retail, food and beverage, and services. So we didn't get into the more specific or more granular categorization of the type of store, the type of business. Next slide. Next slide, please. And then in terms of the business status, we captured whether the business was open, closed, or vacant. For the definitions, we decided that open meant that the business was either clearly operating, there were people inside, there were customers coming and going, or if there was some signage that suggested that the business was operating in some capacity. So if they had a sign on the door that said, "We are taking online orders," or "We are open for curbside pickup," we considered that an open business as well, that there was an indication they were bringing in revenue of some sort. And then we also noted if the business was closed but still appeared to be leasing the space or if the storefront was vacant. Next slide, please. And we also captured additional information primarily about whether or how businesses were adapting to manage their operations during COVID. So primarily looked at whether the business or the restaurant had outdoor dining. But we also looked at other modifications, including capacity limits or whether they had temperature checks or had additional ventilation to operate more safely. Next slide. Next slide. So jumping into the survey findings, this chart looks at the level of activity, so the proportion of open businesses across the 24 corridors. And again, this was in July of this year. And what you can see is that many of the corridors had approximately 70% of businesses that were open. But there was also a big range. And it seemed to us that many of the corridors that are more regional destinations or rely on more commuting, more office commuters, more tourism, tended to have a much lower rate of business activity, of businesses that had reopened, while the locally-serving corridors had a higher rate of businesses that had reopened. Next slide. We also looked at the proportion of active businesses by the type. What you can see here is that the service sector had a significantly lower rate of businesses that were open. I mentioned previously that gyms were not allowed to open at this time. So we think that that at least explains a portion of that difference. But we also think that there are likely additional challenges that service-related businesses are facing to operate safely or to operate in a way that customers perceive as safe. Next slide. And we looked at the relationship between the zoning districts or the zoning typologies and the level of activity. What you can see here is that the commercial districts, including the C overlays and our commercial office districts, had a higher rate of businesses that were open. The industrial zoning districts and mixed-use zoning districts had fewer businesses that had reopened. We think this relates again to the fact that more locally-serving corridors tended to have more activity and areas that are a little more auto-centric or more destinations had a lower rate. Next slide. And we also compared the activity that we were seeing in July with that of 2018 when we did these previous surveys. So this chart looks at the inactive businesses, so businesses that were either closed or vacant across the corridors, with the 2018 figures in pink and the 2020 numbers in red. So again, a wide range. Across all corridors, there was a higher rate of inactive businesses in July. But for places like Fulton Mall, it was very, it was nearly the same as it was in 2018. Whereas some of those, the places like Canal Street, Soho, Flatiron, that really rely on office commuters and are regional transit destinations, had a much higher rate of businesses that were inactive at this period in time. Next slide. And we also looked at turnover of space. So there's a lot on this graph, so I'll try to break it down. The four bars across the bottom show the previous use, so show what the space was used for in 2018, whether it was dry retail, food and beverage, services, or whether it was vacant. And the color of the bar shows what the space became. So for example, in the first column, it was, these were storefronts that were dry retail in 2018. 80% of those were still dry retail in 2020. But the hatched marks indicate that those dry retail businesses were closed at this time when we did the surveys, that they had not reopened. And then 17% of the spaces that were dry retail in 2018 were vacant in 2020 when we did the survey. So some of the things that stand out to us are that the dry retail businesses, the storefronts that were previously dry retail, had a higher rate of vacancy in 2020. And we think this is consistent with some of these longer-term trends of the dry retail sector contracting in the city. We also noted that within the services sector, there was a larger portion of businesses that were closed when we did the surveys. So this suggests there may be some additional vulnerabilities of businesses that have not yet become vacant but were not able to reopen, at least as of the summer. And then we also noted that 70% of spaces that were vacant in 2018 were still vacant when we did the surveys in July. So this seemed like a somewhat high figure and suggested that in addition to turnover of space just from sort of the churn of businesses, that there's also a large portion of retail spaces that remain vacant for a longer period of time that may be less related to the neighborhood as a whole or the retail corridor as a whole, but something about the specific space or the landlord or the building having more difficulty finding tenants. Next slide, please. And we also looked at some of the more recent programs to facilitate the recovery, including the Open Streets and Open Restaurants program. Next slide. This chart looks at the participation in the Open Restaurants program by corridor. Again, this was in July, so fairly early in the existence of this program. But you can see there's a large range. So in some neighborhoods, we had 40 or 50% of restaurants that had open restaurant permits. In other neighborhoods, it was down from 0 to 15% of restaurants that were participating. We think there are a number of reasons why this may be. The primary factor is probably just the proportion of full-service versus limited-service restaurants within the corridors. So for example, we spoke with the Pittkan Avenue bid in Brownsville. And they explained that many of the restaurants in this corridor operated primarily with takeout service prior to the pandemic. So there was less incentive to take advantage of the outdoor dining to manage with the pandemic. Whereas other corridors that had more sit-down dining tended to have higher participation. Next slide. And we also looked at the proportion of businesses that had reopened according to whether they were on an open street or not. When we did the survey, we didn't see a significant difference. But this is something that if we do future surveys along these lines, we would be particularly interested in exploring to see if there's a noticeable impact of the Open Streets program on businesses being able to open or stay open. Next slide. I think I've covered most of the key findings, so let's go to the next slide, please. And the next slide. And then finally, I just wanted to note that in this report that we've published on the DCP website, we also included an appendix with a detailed map of each corridor that shows not only the overall rate of activity when we did the survey, but how those are distributed within the corridor. And so people can see exactly where the businesses are that we surveyed and which ones were open, closed, or vacant at that time. So I will stop there and happy to take any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, Dylan. I'm looking now for raised hands, and I see Vice Chair Knuckles. And maybe you could take down your screen, Dylan.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Dylan, for the presentation. This is very interesting. I was just wondering, I did not see among the survey 125th Street in northern Manhattan, nor did I see, I don't recall seeing in the Bronx, either Fordham Road or the Hub area, around 149th Street and Third and that area. Is that because you consider those regional locations as opposed to local? Arguably, they're both, but I was just wondering why they're not in the study.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's more just that we tried, these locations were selected in 2018 for the previous study that we did of storefront vacancy. And the goal was to select a cross-section of different types of neighborhoods. And we always knew that there were many neighborhoods that were not going to be captured. And so I think that those specific corridors that you're mentioning are not excluded because they don't, because we believe that they don't fit some criteria, but more that we were hopeful that the corridors we looked at for the study did include a range of types of retail corridors. But as we've done this, we've also, you know, we've gotten feedback from bids and others that we've spoken with, that they would like us to look at different and additional corridors. And so we are, if and when we repeat the survey in the future, we are looking at whether we can expand into different geographies. So I think we'd be very open to suggestions about what may not be covered in terms of neighborhoods or types of neighborhoods and happy to think about ways to expand this survey.
Yeah, because in those three examples, those are the highest grossing retail corridors in their respective areas. So I'd be interested for one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you, Dylan. Really very interesting information and it's a very challenging topic, given how many elements of the public realm really affect the success of retail. And my question for you is, you know, as we look to making some elements of open restaurants and now open storefronts potentially permanent, how is this information being used to sort of understand the role of those policies on the success of these corridors? You know, how do we envision being able to use this for policymaking?
Yeah, so I think as a start, as we put together this survey, we've been working very closely with SBS and EDC and bids, explaining our approach and trying to make sure that we are asking the right questions to help guide these programs that are being developed and then to be able to monitor the effectiveness of these programs. We also, I think that in addition to this survey, we understand that there are many other elements of the success of businesses or the viability of businesses that a simple assessment of which storefronts are open or closed does not really get at. So we're also looking at other ways of gathering information to inform policy. So we, one example is we've, we're working with a group at Columbia in the School of International and Public Affairs to do a more targeted business, small business survey to understand how employment has changed over time, how revenue has changed over time, different needs for city programs or financial resources that businesses need. So we're trying to get at this from a few different angles. And then I think just working very closely with SBS to make sure that the results that we're seeing are going into the ways that we're creating or modifying programs that are aimed at supporting businesses over time.
One thing that struck me, you know, which is very helpful, would be helpful information, and I know it's difficult to get, is asking rents per square foot. You know, as we look at generally the impact of being able to dine outdoors, it's going to, we hope, stabilize, you know, some of those market indicators. You know, and something interesting was raised. I talked to a restaurateur who mentioned that, you know, the ability to have outdoor dining, you know, really has changed his rent calculations, you know. And so spaces that have accessible outdoor dining space, and now if it's going to be permanent, you know, the entire value proposition of that space has changed significantly, which in turn affects the rent. And spaces that, you know, are right in front of a bus stop and do not, you know, or otherwise do not have the ability to have any outdoor dining, their value has plummeted. And so I think it's really, we should be cognizant of how policymaking of this kind affects, you know, something so substantive as the rent of a space.
It's interesting that the bus stop, which previously could have been thought of as an attraction of bringing customers right to your door, now has changed, the calculus has changed. Commissioner Delos.
Yeah, thanks for the information. I thought it was fascinating when it was first presented, and it's certainly fascinating again. But I definitely think it's a snapshot in time. The, as you said, this was done in July. You know, just so happens, Fifth Avenue Committee, you know, the organization I run, you know, we have 29 commercial spaces. And literally, I feel like every month, it's evolving. The situation evolves every month in terms of what's going on with each tenant. You know, I think one thing that would be interesting, and I know you mentioned, you know, reaching out to the bids, I'm wondering how much conversation there's been with this data with the commercial brokerage community. I think they're having very, you know, very time-sensitive information that's very relevant, I think, you know, to the point that Commissioner Ortiz made earlier about rents and how it's impacted now by the open streets, chambers of commerce. You know, you mentioned the capstone from SEPA. You know, but looking at those questions, for instance, in an immigrant community, an immigrant commercial corridor or a commercial corridor with a high percentage of MWBE businesses, I think, you know, would be very, you know, informative potentially. And then, you know, that 70% that remain vacant over that nearly two-year period of time, that definitely screams for like deeper analysis about what is going on. And, you know, you mentioned two potential reasons, and that could very well be it. You know, the space itself or the landlord. You know, that obviously might necessitate a different policy response, you know, depending on what's going on with those particular spaces. So it's just like peeling an onion, like, you know, there's just layers and layers to this. And I think the more that there's consultation with the broad range of other commercial, you know, the ecosystem that is, you know, commercial retail and manufacturing in New York City, the more that I think we can make sure that our public policy has the intended and not unintended consequences.
Thank you. Just going back to your first point about the fact that it was very much a point in time. And we did give a lot of thought about when it made sense to do this survey. And I think there was always some expectation and hope that we would be able to repeat the survey at a point in the future. And then I think the suggestion to try to get this in the hands of commercial brokers and others is a fantastic idea. And we are certainly open to or eager to have different ideas about how to distribute this to a broader audience. So that's, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I would just follow on to Commissioner Delos's point on the, you know, the 70% of space that remains vacant. You know, I think we should also add to the reasons why is just a structural oversupply of retail space owing to, you know, low demand and increasingly, you know, the changing ways in which people are shopping, which is reducing our ability to fill brick-and-mortar spaces. It's something, you know, I say, talk a lot about to this group, and I wanted to add it to that list.
Thank you. Commissioner Sarula.
Why everything keeps turning on and off? I'm sorry. I just, I want to thank you also for the report. Like Commissioner Delos, I enjoyed seeing the report when it was first issued. And seeing the data now is particularly telling. Let me just say a couple of things from my own experience, since we're talking about bids and the role bids can play in further discussions about the data. There are many of us who are doing very similar surveys on a regular basis. We certainly have the, I guess, in a way, I'm quite surprised at the data that's being presented with respect to it having been done in July. The idea that there was, you know, close to 70% of street-level retail, when obviously retail, the category of retail that was even possible to be opened was so limited at that point, is quite a high number. We are at like 72% now of storefront retail, all different categories, open.
English, Spanish, Chinese, and more.
That were open pre-COVID. Remember, for more information. A little commercial now for City Planning. But so anyway, I just wanted to say that I think this is really helpful, that there is no question that the bids could have further conversations, many of them in neighborhoods that were not surveyed back in 18 and 19 when the first version of this report, for a variety of different reasons, was put together, could be helpful in providing some data so that you can get a broader picture of different neighborhoods. I can tell you that where you will see more success is in neighborhoods that are more closely connected to residential communities. And that is an interesting fact, despite the fact that we do have over 70% of. Despite the fact that we do have over 70% of our retail open, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're overwhelmed with customers, but they're doing their best to survive with the programs that are available to them. But we, I have seen it myself in, in looking at other neighborhoods, that where you have a more reliable, consistent customer base, which is in neighborhoods where there is more residential and a more 24/7 population, particularly on weekends, you will see a, a greater engagement with, at the retail level, which is quite different than the commercial district, again, despite the fact that we're proud of our, our small business owners who are doing their best to, to be open and out there. And the other thing I just wanted to say is that we have been sharing this data, and other bids have as well. I've participated in numerous meetings and panels over the last few months with the brokerage community and those who were focused on what we can be doing, and obviously, we're working very closely with other city agencies, particularly through SBS and their involvement to, to advocate for the things that we're hearing from our businesses that they need more of, or, or perhaps flexibility with to be able to either expand or enhance. You know, open storefronts is going, it's going to be interesting to see how open storefronts perhaps even supports the restaurant community, if more people are coming out and shopping or feeling more comfortable shopping outside, does that mean somebody will then go and have a bite to eat? Just the normal, more, more of the traditional mindset of how people engage their commercial districts, and I guess time will tell, but I just wanted to acknowledge the work that you've done here. I wanted to share that, again, that I, it's really interesting to see the percentage that you found in these neighborhoods in July, but certainly that is very true today. Hopefully, they'll continue to survive and, and grow, but also to say that I have no doubt that the bid community would be more than happy to follow up and to provide the data they're keeping in neighborhoods that have not been studied in this report, but could be helpful to telling a bigger citywide story. And certainly, I'd be, you know, happy to help facilitate that if, if it's helpful to, to us and, and to the public to learn more about what's happening in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. I am so struck during this discussion by the expertise that the commissioners bring to the work that the department does, not just to the applications before the commission, but reaching back deep into the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well then, thank you, Dylan, for the presentation and for the work of the entire team that went into the onsite surveying in the midst of a pandemic.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we begin our regular agenda, and the first item is a certification of the zoning map amendment and special permit in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Coranza Wood.
Coranza. Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application on behalf of RP Inlet LLC to facilitate the redevelopment of the Acme Smoked Fish Facility in Greenpoint Community District One, Brooklyn. Next slide. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from an M31 zoning district to an M15 zoning district and a large-scale general development special permit. The proposed development would include approximately 488,479 square feet of office and retail space and approximately 95,299 square feet of a new Acme Smoked Fish facility to replace the existing facility at 30 Gem Street in Greenpoint Community District One, Brooklyn. Next slide. Bounded in 1905, Acme Smoked Fish is a fourth-generation Brooklyn business that first opened at 30 Gem Street in 1954. Acme, which has its roots in distributing local smoked fish, now processes smokes and distributes its products under various labels, both locally to New York businesses as well as regionally. In the last 10 years, Acme has developed facilities in South Florida and North Carolina to serve growing markets. Next slide. Next slide. Acme has grown its Greenpoint facility from a 10,000-square-foot building to its current size of approximately 73,000 square feet. In 1975, Acme expanded north to an adjacent building at 14 Meserel Avenue, previously occupied by Williamsburg Steel. In 1994, Acme expanded again to the south at 192 Banker Street, formerly occupied by Devon Lithographers, and further to 190 Banker Street in 2003. Their current facility contains fish processing and production space, distribution space, and administrative offices. There are approximately 170 employees working there today. However, the existing facility faces a number of challenges. Advances in food safety require upgrades at the facility, and the level of investment required to upgrade the existing facility would be cost prohibitive. The proposed solution is to construct a new purpose-built facility on the portion of the site not occupied by Acme today, while keeping the current plant operational, which allows Acme the opportunity to remain at the site in Greenpoint. Next slide. Acme is situated in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg IBZ and is in close proximity to the residential neighborhoods of Williamsburg and Greenpoint. The surrounding area is characterized by a variety of industrial, commercial, and residential land uses and various building types. The area immediately surrounding the development site is characterized by one- and two-brick-story bricks, brick buildings, and contains various industrial uses, such as fabricators, contractor supply stores, and food processing facilities. As well, conversion of former industrial buildings for commercial uses can be found throughout the surrounding area. There are also three-to-four-story residential multifamily walk-up buildings in the northeastern portion of the surrounding area. This area was within the 2005 Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning, which rezoned heavy industrial districts to light industrial, residential, and special mixed-use districts to facilitate the development of thousands of new housing units. The Acme facility abutted but was not included within the rezoning area. At that time, upon the request of Acme, the heavy M31 zoning district was maintained to support the continuation of its operation. Today, the surrounding area is predominantly zoned M31, M11, and M12, and there is a special mixed-use district and an R6B district at the periphery of the area. The project area is within an M31 district, which allows heavy industrial uses and certain commercial uses at a maximum FAR of 2.0. Building heights are governed by a sky-exposure plane, which begins at a height of 60 feet or four stories, whichever is less. M31 districts are subject to parking requirements based on the type of use and the size of the establishment. For example, one parking space is required per 300 square feet of office floor area. M11 and M12 zoning districts allow for light industrial uses and a wider range of commercial and community facility uses. M12 zoning districts allow up to 2.0 FAR permitted industrial and commercial uses and up to 4.8 FAR of permitted community facility uses. While M11 districts allow up to 1.0 FAR permitted industrial and commercial uses and up to 2.4 FAR of community facility uses. The surrounding area is well-served by open space. East River State Park and Bushwick Inlet Park are mapped between North Seventh and Quay Streets along the waterfront. Bushwick Inlet Park is still under development and will eventually extend to Quay Street. McCarran Park is located one block to the east of the development site. The surrounding area is also well-served by public transportation. The Nassau Avenue G train station is approximately four, four blocks to the east of the development site, and the Greenpoint Avenue station is approximately eight blocks to the north. The Bedford Avenue L train station is approximately nine blocks to the south. Nearby bus lines include the B32, the B62, the B43, and the B24. Together, these lines provide access from the development site to much of North Brooklyn and beyond. The East River Ferry has stops at North Sixth Street in Williamsburg and at India Street in Greenpoint. There are also two city bike stations in the surrounding area. Next page. The project area is within the Greenpoint-Williamsburg IBZ and is in close proximity to industrial business incentive areas within the IBZ. New development in the IBZ have been predominantly hotel nightlife and office-related uses. However, in 2016, the city designated a portion of the IBZ as an industrial business incentive area to promote the retention of industrial uses within the IBZ by allowing greater flexibility for the development of buildings containing industrial uses by special permit. This program facilitated the construction of 25 Kent Avenue and 103 North 13th Street, as well as approvals for 12 Franklin Street, all mixed-use developments containing new industrial space. Next slide. The project area comprises the entirety of Block 2615, bounded by Gem Street to the west, on Meserel Avenue to the north, Banker Street to the east, and Wythe Avenue and North 15th Street to the south. The existing buildings mostly date from the 1920s and 30s. The Acme facility currently occupies tax lots 1, 21, 25, and 50, comprising four interconnected one-to-two-story buildings with a total approximate floor, built-floor area of 72,885 square feet. The development site also includes Lot 6, which contains APC Stone, a stone supplier occupying a two-story building, which is currently in the process of moving out and is expected to relocate within the area, as well as a single-story vacant building with approximately 3,800 square feet on Lot 19, and the field office and open storage for Corzo Contracting Company, the utility construction company that occupies the southern portion of the block, which also intends to relocate within the city. Next slide. These images are of the warehouse for the stone supplier on Lot 6. Next slide. These images are of a portion of Lot 6, as well as a portion of the Acme frontage on Banker Street. Next slide. And these are images of Lot 125, the open storage for the construction company. Next slide. And these are images of the very, various Acme buildings on the block. Next slide. Acme is once again looking to expand and modernize on Block 2615. The proposed large-scale general development will contain a new Acme facility and a new commercial building, totaling 583,778 square feet of zoning floor area, or 5.0 FAR, approximately 21,000 square feet of open space, 150 parking spaces, and 65 bike parking spaces. Next slide. In order to maintain continued operations, the new custom-built Acme facility will be constructed on Lot 6, the northeast corner of the block, while the current Acme facility will continue to operate on Lots 1, 21, 25, and 50. Next slide. Once the Acme facility is complete, Acme will move its operations to the new facility with minimal disruption. Only after Acme is operating in the new facility will the applicant begin demolition and construction on the remaining portion of the development site. Next slide. The overall development will consist of a four-story facility on the northeast corner of the site and a commercial building that ranges from two stories along Banker Street and Wythe Avenue, five stories of Meserel Avenue and Gem Street, and will reach an ultimate height of 170 feet with nine stories in the center of the site. The development also includes pedestrian connections through the building between Banker Street and Gem Street and Wythe Avenue and Gem Street, and a plaza at the intersection of Wythe Avenue, Banker Street, and North 15th Street. Next slide. The Acme facility will occupy the northeast portion of the site with an entrance on Banker Street and loading berths on both Banker Street and Meserel Avenue. The rest of the ground floor will be activated with retail uses on Banker Street, Wythe Avenue, Gem Street, and Meserel Avenue, and the office lobby will be on Gem Street. Entrance to the parking garage will also be on Gem Street, and loading for the commercial uses will be on Banker Street. A significant public access area that break up, breaks up the irregular long block by creating connections through the site at Banker Street and Wythe Avenue will also be provided. Next slide. The proposed Acme facility will be a maximum of four stories with a maximum height of 104 feet, plus a mechanical bulkhead with screening approximately 25 feet high. The Acme facility will contain approximately 95,299 square feet of industrial area, and the entrance will be located on Banker Street. The Acme facility will have one loading berth on Banker Street and two loading berths on Meserel Avenue. Next slide. The commercial building will cantilever over a portion of the Acme building. The remaining portion of the Acme building must remain unobstructed for ventilation purposes. You can see here the entrance of the facility at the corner of Meserel Avenue and Banker Street, as well as the entrance of the two loading ducts. Next slide. The proposed facility will provide a more efficient and state-of-the-art industrial space for Acme. The raw materials will be delivered through two loading berths on Meserel Avenue. The first floor of the facility will contain the cooler and freezer areas, a brining section, defrosting and cleaning areas, and a storage area to hold the organic waste in refrigerated compactor. The organic waste will be removed through the third loading berth on Banker Street. The second and third floors will contain the salting, smoking, and oven areas and, and other fish products, hanging cooler areas, packaging and packaging cooling areas, and the salad production and mayo storage areas. The administrative office and employee wellness areas will be located on the fourth floor of the facility. It is anticipated that the majority of the current distribution activity will move out of this location while growing the production and administrative aspects of the business. Next slide. The commercial building, which will contain office and ground floor retail uses, will occupy the remainder of the block. The nine-story commercial portion of the proposed development will have a maximum building height of approximately 178 feet six inches, plus a mechanical bulkhead with screening approximately 25 feet high. The proposed development will have approximately 488,479 square feet of total commercial floor area, of which the office use will be approximately 454,661 square feet, and the ground floor retail use approximately 33,818 square feet. Next slide. Approximately 150 off-street accessory parking spaces will, will be provided on the ground floor with access from Gem Street. It is anticipated that the parking garage will be used by Acme employees, office tenants and visitors, and retail and restaurant patrons. The office and retail portion of the proposed development will have three loading berths, which will be located on Banker Street. The building will also provide 65 accessory bike parking spaces. The proposed development will also feature terraces on the roof of the building, as well as on the stepbacks provided at varying heights. Next slide. The proposed development will also provide a total of approximately 21,400 square feet of public access area, or PAA, of which approximately 12,880 square feet will be open to the sky and approximately 8,523 square feet partially covered. Additionally, separate from the PAA, there's approximately 5,775 square feet of open area adjacent to the retail establishments on the development site. Next slide. The proposed development will offer new links to the existing street grid by providing accurate publicly accessible open spaces and pedestrian pathways. The main pedestrian pathway extends north-south from Wythe Avenue to the mid-block of the development site, and the second pedestrian pathway under the commercial building extends east-west from Banker Street to Gem Street. The PAA will include a variety of seating options throughout the site, including accessible companion seating, movable tables and chairs, benches, and wooden platforms with sculptural seating. As well, the brown flat, the brown platform shown in this drawing indicates spaces that can be programmed by ground floor retail users, giving businesses flexibility to provide outdoor seating as needed. Next slide. This is an image of a pedestrian pathway through the building, which will help to break up the larger regular block, bringing people from the G train station to the east through the site into the waterfront. The corridor will be well-lit, include bright treatments on the ceiling of the passageway. Next slide. The Plaza Wythe Avenue is at a prominent intersection in the IBZ where the street grids of Greenpoint and Williamsburg intersect. The open plaza will bring more light and, and air into the block and offers planted seating areas for future employees, visitors, and residents. Next slide. Next slide. In order to facilitate the development, the applicant proposes the following actions: a zoning map amendment to rezone the development site from an M31 zoning district to an M15 zoning district, and a large-scale general development special permit pursuant to ZR Section 74743A2 to allow the proposed development to penetrate the required sky exposure plane and the required initial setback distance contrary to ZR 4343. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to rezone the project area from an M31 zoning district, a heavy industrial district, to an M15 zoning district, a light industrial district. M15 zoning districts allow permitted commercial and manufacturing uses at 5.0 FAR and community facility uses at 6.5 FAR. M15 districts allow for commercial and industrial uses in Use Groups 4 through 17, subject to certain limitations, and Use Group 18, subject to compliance with performance standards. Hotels and self-storage facilities are only allowed by special permit. New developments in M15 districts are subject to a sky exposure plane that begins at a height of 85 feet above the street line, or six stories, whichever is less, with a required setback at or below the 85-foot height of 20 feet on a narrow street and 15 feet on a wide street. Parking is not required in M15 districts. The applicant has stated that the proposed M15 district is appropriate in this location as the allowable uses are consistent with surrounding land uses, and the higher density and lower parking requirements are reflective of the good transit in the area and the trend to grow jobs in varied sectors closer to residents, seen in surrounding projects like 25 Kent Avenue and other IBAA projects. Next slide. The applicant is also seeking a special permit pursuant to ZR 74743A2 to modify the required height and setback regulations through a large-scale general development plan. The large-scale special permit offers flexibility to allow the development of a state-of-the-art fish processing facility, flexible office space floor plates, and a large public access area on the development site. The specific waivers being requested are one, a heightened setback waiver. Under the proposed M15 zoning district, ZR 4343 requires that the front wall be set back 20 feet from a narrow street above a height of 85 feet or six stories, whichever is less. The commercial component of the proposed development along Gem Street and Meserol Avenue will rise on the lot line to a height of approximately 104 feet before providing the setback. Second waiver is at the sky exposure plane. Under the proposed M15 zoning district, CR 4343 requires that a development stay below a sky exposure plane of 2.7 vertical feet to one horizontal foot extending from the maximum front wall height of 85 feet. The commercial component of the proposed development will penetrate the required sky exposure plane on the Gem Street and Meserol Avenue sides of the building. Next slide. These waiver diagrams highlight the requested setback and sky exposure plane modifications along Meserol Avenue and Gem Street. Next slide. Here along Meserol Avenue and Gem Street, the commercial building will rise at the lot line to a height of approximately 104 feet before providing the setback, and the sky exposure plane is penetrated along Gem Street. Next slide. And here, the same condition can be seen along Meserol Avenue, the commercial building will rise to the lot line of approximately 104 feet before providing the setback, and the sky exposure plane is penetrated along Gem Street. These waivers would permit the distribution of the commercial floor area on the site, shifting the bulk to the center of the site to accommodate the need for the Acme smoked fish facility to be unobstructed for ventilation purposes, as well as to provide open space at White Avenue. It also allows a building design that provides large, regular office floor plates. Ultimately, the provision of the Acme fish processing facility with its unique programmatic requirements, combined with the need to create adequately sized office floor plates, requires the waiver of the required 20-foot front wall, setback, and penetration of the required sky exposure plane. Next slide. An EIS was conducted with DCP acting on behalf of the CPC as lead agency. The notice of completion for the DEIS was issued on October 30th, 2020. The DEIS identifies significant adverse impacts related to transportation, and possible mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be explored further between the DEIS and FEIS. Next slide. The requested zoning map amendment and large-scale general development special permit will facilitate the development of a new, enlarged, and improved Acme smoked fish processing facility in a commercial office and retail building. RP Inlet LLC will construct the new processing facility in sequence with the new commercial building on the development site. The proposed actions will allow Acme to remain in Brooklyn. The proposed actions support both the creation of new office jobs in Brooklyn and the retention of existing manufacturing jobs in the Acme smoked fish facility. Thank you.
And I will note for the commissioners that while the little banner below Karenza's name says Brooklyn Borough Office, she is actually giving us this presentation from Munich. Karenza has received a very prestigious fellowship. If you would take a minute to share your good news with the commissioners?
Sure. So in March of this year, I was offered a opportunity to become a Robert Bosch Foundation Fellow, and the idea with this is to do an intercultural exchange, working on a transatlantic topic for the course of nine months. And so I'll be looking at exploring industrial areas, mostly in Berlin, but in other areas of Germany as well, and hope to bring back my findings to the commission.
And we are so fortunate that Karenza continued to continue with this project, which she has been involved with for years. I'll note that we, working in the department, we make a lot of site visits, but you have been as exciting as touring the Acme smoked fish facility, and I cherish a photo of Karenza and I holding the most gigantic frozen sturgeon. And with that, I will turn it over to questions from the commissioners, and I see Vice Chair
Thank you. This is an interesting project. I actually wanted to ask Karenza, as well as my colleagues from Brooklyn, Commissioners Duweck and De Laouz. A half million square feet of commercial space is a pretty big leap of faith in this environment. I was just wondering, did you have any insight in what the market might be for commercial space in that area?
Sure, I can start. So clearly, 25 Kent Avenue is the precedent of commercial development in this area. And I will note that this is RP Inlet, half the team worked on 25 Kent Avenue, and at the public hearing can answer specific questions regarding that development as well. And so that development brought on the first spec office space in Greenpoint Williamsburg at this scale. And I will say, what I've heard from that development team is that prior to the pandemic, approximately 80% of the office space was to be leased. However, with the advent of the pandemic, some of those leases were put on hold, and right now represents about 25% of the office space. However, based on interest in continued negotiations, the development team is expecting that the office component would be leased up by the end of next year. And given the timeline of this project, where the Acme facility will be constructed first, followed by the commercial building, that the product that's delivered at that point wouldn't be competing with the space of 25 Kent Avenue, but that 25 Kent Avenue would be bringing a concentration of various tech and media companies there that would really become, create the synergy of attracting that type of business to this building as well.
Okay. Ms. Sharon De Laouz.
I certainly had a similar question when this comes back about what their market analysis is for the demand for that much office space. I'm also, I guess I remain very curious about getting a more formal report back about 25 Kent. When that was first passed, we said we would be getting some kind of formal report about that model. And I think, was this the third project or the fourth project before us? I can't remember anymore since 25 Kent. And I just don't, I don't want to go down the path where, five years from now, we'd do some analysis about commercial, retail, and manufacturing space, and then the vacant space goes up, right? The percent that remains vacant goes up because we didn't catch this beforehand. So that's a reflection that I hope that we can answer after this application. The other question, the specific to this application is, remind me how much space Acme currently has?
We have about 73,000 square feet right now.
So this would be an expansion of their space that they have?
Okay. It's an expansion, and also it's clearly modernizing the space to meet the needs that they have today as well.
Yeah. And do they imagine utilizing any of that retail square footage for themselves? I can imagine a smoked fish, small retail outlet.
So they haven't explicitly said that yet, but of course, that space would be there.
Right, right. And I want to say that, to the extent that there's some kind of trend going on with these uses, this seems to be the highest percentage of parking spaces out of the projects that we've seen. And so I'd just be interested in understanding a little bit more where that number comes from.
So this is what they, I mean, there are a number of employees that drive to the site today, and so it is to accommodate those, of course, and then the office component as well. But I think they can speak a little bit more into what they have in mind for those users. But I am...
Yeah, but I guess especially given that the EIS identified two things, but one was traffic and the other was construction impacts, right? So obviously, to the extent that they can, when it comes back, talk about how they plan to address any of those, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
I would a couple of things, Commissioner De Laouz, in response to the questions that you posed. One is that I believe it is that our next review session, we will have a briefing on the IBIA's, as had been requested. The second is to note that this actually is not an IBIA mechanism. Here, we are using a large scale. The fact that we had a very particular user with a relatively unique programmatic requirement led us to believe that that was the preferable option. And then with respect to why Acme needed the space, as Karenza had noted, it wasn't just more space. What is remarkable in touring the facility is one of the safety protocols, the cleanliness protocols that are in place, but also how very old the facility is. And so to keep up with ever-tightening FDA requirements, that was part of the impetus.
No, I appreciate that. It's the same model by a different name. I understand that it's particular to this particular owner and user.
And I have to say, it was a pleasure to be working with an actual manufacturing company looking to expand in Brooklyn. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's really good to see that Acme smoked fish are doing so well that they can afford to spend oodles of money on one of the most inefficient commercial industrial buildings I've seen in a while. And it's hard to know where to start. It's almost as though five buildings were built independently and then brought to the site in the middle of the night and assembled without the benefit of floodlights. So maybe when they come back, the architect can explain exactly what's going on, because I find the whole massing assembly very confusing, and it must be enormously expensive, and one wonders why it couldn't be a bit more rational. I do compliment them for providing the public space, and I think that's really a good public benefit. One hopes that there will be population there to use it, but I do appreciate that. And going back again, just finally to the parking, with the G-Train a couple of blocks away, is it policy to provide so many parking spaces? Wouldn't you want to encourage people to use public transportation?
So it's certainly not a requirement of the underlying, well, the proposed M15 districts, and we support that mapping here because in part, there isn't a parking requirement. And I think this goes back to what the applicant sees as a need in the area. A number of these IBAA projects that have come through have either completely waived the parking or have provided less, and so I think this is also in a response to projected anticipation of parking needs in this area. It also is sort of the maximum amount they can provide, and so within the ground floor plan, so I think this is something that we can ask of them. Come back.
Thank you.
I'll also note, Commissioner De Laouz, you had commented on, or one of the commissioners had commented on the storefront. A little-known secret is the fact that Acme traditionally has opened up at 7:00 a.m. on Friday mornings for retail pickup, and the lines will form very early in the morning because the prices were phenomenal. Karenza would frequently treat the Brooklyn office. And now in the COVID era, they will still have open, but you have to have placed your order online, I believe, on Tuesday. And if folks haven't availed themselves of this, it's a real New York experience. And with that, over to Commissioner Duweck.
Thank you. Was there any mention of IDA benefits on this project?
In terms of...
Do you know if they're going to be applying to the IDA for any benefits related to the build-out?
So no. The proposal here mimics a lot of what the goals of the IBAA are with the mix of industrial and commercial uses. And the IBAA, the mechanisms there allow for the build-out of spec industrial space and for that review process to make sure that industrial...
Karenza, I think Commissioner Duweck is asking about EDC IDA benefits.
Oh, sorry.
It's the Industrial Development Agency.
Yes, I heard IBAA. It's an acronym that's always on my mind. Yes, they're considering doing that. Yeah.
They are considering. And have they presented an application to them yet?
I don't believe so, not yet.
And what was the amount of jobs that were going to be retained or increased at the project again?
So there's about 170 employees at the site today. In the environmental review, it was projected 140 would remain on the site, and that's in part reflective of the changing business model that's also going to be occurring with the new facility right now. There's a lot of distribution activity at the site, which in those, that use would predominantly be moved elsewhere in a more truck-friendly area.
Got it. And I assume now that even in COVID, I mean, the nature of the business requires it to be on-site for the most part. Right? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Levin.
Thank you. Actually, Karenza just answered half of my question. My site visits to Acme have been limited to their various points of sale all across the city. It seems like they're in every supermarket, they're at Zabar's, they're Whole Foods. I think I've eaten a lot of Acme fish, and it's really wonderful, under a whole bunch of different brand names. And it's wonderful to imagine that this activity can remain in Brooklyn. But I was going to ask, someplace in your presentation, you mentioned that some portion of their activity, particularly distribution, was going to go elsewhere. Do you know where it's going, what location, and what number of jobs will be attached to that piece of their effort?
So I don't have that information at this time. I know there are some plans in place, and I think the applicant can speak to that when they come back.
Okay, good. And congratulations on your fellowship. That sounds great. Bring back some good news, good intelligence.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if they could just, going back to that question that Commissioner Levin asked, do you know if those jobs, you said you don't know where they're moving to yet, but do you know if they're going to be maintained in New York City? Or are they going out of state, or they're going upstate, in-state?
I can't confirm at this point. I mean, they would need to be in the region, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. That'd be interesting to know.
We'll make sure it happens.
I don't see any other raised hands, so this application is certified. Thank you, Karenza.
Thank you.
All right. The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 1. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz. Please, please, up. Alexandra. And there's the presentation.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by Don Kieran and N R L U R F LLC for a zoning map amendment to facilitate the development of a new five-story mixed-use building with seven dwelling units and commercial uses at one thirty-five, one thirty-seven Bedford Avenue in Brooklyn. Next. The applicant is requesting uh to establish a C one four commercial overlay with, within an existing R six A and R six B districts. Next. The project area is located in District One in Brooklyn. Next. And it is composed of eleven contiguous tax lots on block twenty-three oh five, consisting of lots from one to ten and a portion of lot thirty-four. Next. These lots are located on the east side of Bedford Avenue between North Nine and North Ten Streets in Williamsburg neighborhood in Brooklyn. McCarran Park, a thirty-five acre public park operated by the Department of Parks and Recreation, is located two blocks north of the project area, north now uh being now where left. And the area is well served by public transportation. The Bedford Avenue L subway station is approximately to block south of the Bedford Avenue and North Seventh Street. And this area is also served by B sixty-two bus. Additionally, there are bike lanes along Kent Avenue and Wythe Avenue, and there is an East River ferry landing on North Sixth Street. Next. The existing zoning districts in the area include residential, commercial, and manufacturing designations, including a mix of R six A, R six B, C one four, MX eight, which encompass to R seven A and then one to R six A districts. The area is within an inclusionary housing designated area. The existing line uses are primarily a mix of multifamily residential and commercial uses. Bedford is the main commercial corridor in the area. It is available with predominantly mixed-use buildings, providing an active, continuous ground floor commercial character. Commercial uses in the surrounding area include a range of local retail and services, such as clothing stores, grocery stores, beauty salons, bar, barber shops, and eating and drinking establishments. Next. The development site. The development site sits in the mid-block portion of the lot and is currently improved with two two-story buildings containing three dwelling units. Next. Towards the south corner of the block front on the intersection between North Ninth Street and Bedford Avenue, the lots are three-story mixed-use buildings with commercial uses on the ground floor and recent residential units above. Next. Towards the south, toward the northern corner of the block front on the intersection between North Tenth Street and Bedford Avenue, the lot, the lots range from two to four-story buildings, um, mixed use, which contain commercial uses on the ground floor and residential units above. Next. The applicant proposed to construct a new five-story building, approximately eighty square feet of mixed use, the mixed residential and commercial. The building will consist of approximately fifty-two hundred square footage of commercial uses for two commercial units and approximately fifty-three hundred square feet of residential uses on the upper floor. In total, the building will contain seven dwelling units. The proposed building height will be fifty-seven feet on the R six A portion and thirty-nine feet on the R six B portion of the development site. Non-accessory parking is required or provided on the development site. Next. The action to, the action necessary to facilitate the proposed development is a requested zoning map amendment to map a fa- uh, hundred, sorry, to map a one hundred put C one four commercial overlay over the existing R six A and R six B zoning districts on the eastern side of Bedford Avenue between North Nine and North Tenth Streets. The proposed commercial overlay is necessary to bring existing commercial uses into conformance and to facilitate new commercial use within the project area, which is not permitted on the u- the use provisions of the existing residential zoning districts. The proposed zoning district is consistent with a other existing C one four commercial overlays map along the west side of Bedford Avenue, extending from North Fourth Street to North Ninth Street, and along the east side of Bedford Avenue, from North Ninth Street to North Eighth Street. Existing, extending the existing C one four overlay to include the project area will improve the retail continuity along Bedford Avenue. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Alexandra? Commissioner Ramperchat.
For the presentation. I was just wondering if they can just provide some, uh, floor plans. I know they provided floor plans, I'm sorry. But if they can provide the layout, I'm just looking at it and they're talking about one bedroom, two bedroom. And just out of curiosity, the second floor, one-bedroom space is allocated there. Looks just as big as the two-bedroom on the third floor, so I would just like to see how the layout is. And also just quick question on the commercial, on the ground floor. It looks pretty narrow uh, on the left-hand side. If they can just, uh, I don't know if this is gonna be a retail or is this supposed to be office? If they can just talk to that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. Um, Alexandra, I know we've, it's been over a number of years, we've had um similar applications on these stretches of Bedford and also I think Barry um seeking to legalize um and allow the expansion of existing commercial. And this sort of fits into that pattern. I wonder, but in some of these locations, it's been a sensitive issue for the surrounding um residents. Has this application been presented to the community board for an informational basis yet? Or is this gonna be news to them?
Um, not in the, in the last couple of months. Uh, we have pointed out to the applicant team uh, that, that will be, that will be great. I know that on the last, uh, on the other uh, applications, also the concern was of the noise that a commercial use will uh will, uh, will create on the rear yard portions of the buildings that are also fronting the uh residential windows on the rear yard of other lots. And particularly in this case, um, the rear yard of these buildings will, will be fronting the mixed use district on the rest of the block that is map. And the current residential uses uh there have a blank, uh, blank wall towards this portion of the block front. So that particular concern uh for our study um might not happen. Um, but I can, um, I, I will ask the applicant team to explain further uh their community outreach strategy for this application.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll note with respect to this one, that this is an application that has been around for quite a while. The applicant um just went silent for a while on this. And um when we were first looking at this, and this is many, many months ago, um, we as a department raised the same question that you did, Commissioner Levin, of making sure that as we saw these applications, that it didn't become rote, but that we consider it in each instance, whether in that particular location it made sense. And to the extent that the applicant doesn't answer, the department will be able to when it comes back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, yeah, I, I was just wondering why the developer here has built a five-story building on half of it, which requires an elevator and only three stories on the other. Why not make it four stories across the site? Uh, do you know what that's about?
I think uh, uh, the, this particular condition is given that half of the block front is map R six B and half of it is map R six A. Uh, and is, and, and that condition happens between uh the two uh development sites. Uh, but I can ask the, the applicant team to expand uh, when they come back to public hearing, uh, their design um strategy for.
But, but that's something we could fix, right?
Um, I will, I will prefer the ar- the architect and the applicant team to respond in terms of the efficiency of the building and if, and in the amount of units and the, what they want to propose here.
No, I'm talking about the zoning, the fact that.
The zoning.
Yeah, we could fix the zoning, so you could build a four-story building on both sides, no?
I think the, um.
That would be out of scope for this, this application.
Exactly.
But yes, it could be rezoned.
It could be.
The, it's currently, it, the lot, the development site is in two different zoning districts. What they had asked for was a um, expansion of an existing commercial overlay, um, but not to change the underlying zoning. Um, I would have to think that they did it, uh, did not ask for a change in the underlying zoning, as that would tend to be even more controversial than expanding a commercial overlay.
Controversial? Because?
Will, will we increase in the, the residential capacity on an existing block front that has um the two zoning districts? And this was a change back in two thousand and six. And I, what I have learned and uh reading past EPC reports of that time and, and the work that our colleagues in the department did at that time is that they map the commercial districts also based on the existing character. And in this case, they were trying to accommodate both the five-story buildings and the three-story buildings.
Yeah. It's, it's just a pity to see, you know, a more clumsy design being the result of our regulations, you know, but still.
I agree.
Uh, and then to second Commissioner Rampershan's request for sort of proper apartment layouts would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then this application is certified.
Great, thank you. And it's great to see you all back again.
Uh, the third item on our agenda is a certification of a UDOT designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn Community District Five. Our presenter is Lilia Carrier. There's the presentation. You have Lilia?
All right. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, this is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a UDOT designation, project approval, and disposition of three vacant city-owned lots to facilitate the construction of three develop, of three buildings developed under the Neighborhood Construction Program with approximately forty-six rental units, eight of which will be designated to the Affordable Independent Residence for Seniors' Heirs Program. Next slide, please, or slide three, please. And, yeah, perfect. Uh, the proposed development is located in East New York in Community District Five in Brooklyn. Next slide. The project includes three development sites. So Development Site One is located at three oh six Pennsylvania Avenue between Belmont and Sutter Avenues. Development Site Two is located at three ninety-two Wyona Street between Sutter Avenue and Blake Avenue. And Development Site Three is located at four sixty-seven Vermont Street and four twenty-six Wyona Street between Blake and Dumont Avenues. Sutter Avenue and Blake Avenue service commercial retail corridors. Excuse me. And notable surrounding sites include schools, house of worship, and open space. There is well-served by transit. For Development Site One, the Pennsylvania Three Station is located a half mile south. The Van Secklen C uh subway station is located approximately half mile to the east. Um, and the Sutter Avenue L station is located a half mile to the west. For Development Sites, uh, two and three, the Van Secklen uh Three Subway Station is a quarter mile to the south. And the Van Secklen C subway station is approximately a half mile uh to the northeast. Local bus service in the area includes the B twenty and the B eighty-three, which travel along Pennsylvania Avenue, and the B fourteen, which travels along Sutter Avenue. Next slide. So Development Site One is located within R six district, medium-density district. R six quality housing, housing regulations allow for a maximum FAR on a wide street. Um, of a maximum FAR on a wide street of three point nine uh with the provision of three point, sorry, excuse me. Uh, R six quality housing regulations allow for a maximum three point O FAR on a wide street or a maximum of three point nine FAR with uh the provision of heirs. Height limitations allow buildings to reach a maximum base height of forty feet and a maximum uh building height of sixty-five feet with a uh fifteen-foot setback on wide streets before reaching the maximum height of seventy-five feet. Surrounding land use includes residential, commercial, community facility, and manufacturing uses. The surrounding residential development consists primar- primarily of low-density, two-family homes and mid-density multifamily buildings with heights ranging from three to seven stories. Zoning districts in the surrounding area includes R six, R seven A north of Belmont Avenue between Pennsylvania and New Jersey Avenues and a C four-three zoning district located immediately to the south alongside our avenue. And M one four located, uh, M one four district located to the west. And a C one three commercial overlay located uh on a portion of Sutter Ave within the R six zoning district. Next slide, please. Development Site One is located at three oh six Pennsylvania Avenue on the west side of the street between Belmont and Sutter Avenue. Next slide, please. The site consists of a vacant mid-block, city-owned tax lot of approximately five thousand square feet with a fifty-foot frontage along Pennsylvania, a wide street, and a lot depth of a hundred feet. Next slide. Development will be a seven-story elevator building with twenty-five affordable dwelling units, eight of which will be dedicated to the heirs program. The mix of units is six studios, twelve one bedrooms, eight two bedrooms, with approximately fourteen thousand four hundred square feet of residential floor area and four thousand three hundred square feet of residential area dedicated to the heirs program. Development will have an FAR of three point seven and a building height of seven, of sixty-five feet. Next slide. The front of the building will be set back approximately fourteen feet to align with the adjacent buildings. There will also be landscaping at the front to buffer between the ground floor residential unit and the street. The proposed building will also include a landscaped rear yard, bicycle parking in the cellar, and a common laundry room on the first floor. Next slide. Development Site Two is also located in R six zoning district. Um, on wide, on narrow streets, R six quality housing regulations allow for a maximum of two point two FAR. Height limitations allow for buildings to reach a minimum base height of thirty feet and a maximum base height of forty-five feet with a fifteen-foot, foot setback on narrow streets before reaching the building, maximum building height of fifty-five feet. The zoning districts in the surrounding area are primarily R six with a C one three overlay alongside our avenue to the north and a C two three overlay along Blake and Levoni Avenue to the south. Next slide. Development Site Two is located at three ninety-two Wyona Street on the west side of Wyona between Sutter Avenue to the north and Blake Avenue to the south. One and two family homes are located to the south of the site and PS one forty-nine is located to the north. Next slide. So the site consists of a vacant mid-block, city-owned tax lot of approximately four thousand square feet with a forty-foot frontage along Wyona, a narrow street, and a hundred-foot lot depth. Next slide, please. The, the Wyona Street development will be a four-story building with eleven affordable rental units. The unit mix will be three studios, five one bedrooms, three three bedrooms, and approximately eight thousand two hundred square feet of residential floor area. Development will have an FAR of two point one six and the building height will be forty-two feet. Next slide. The front of the building will be set back fourteen feet to align with the adjacent buildings and to accommodate an access ramp. The landscape, landscaping at the front will buffer between the ground floor residential units and the street. The ground floor will also be raised to, raised two feet above the ground floor level to provide for more privacy to the ground floor units. The development will also include a landscaped rear yard, bicycle parking, and a common laundry. bicycle parking and a common laundry room on the first floor. Next slide. So Development Site Three is also located within R6 zoning district and partially within a C23 commercial overlay. A C23 commercial overlay permits a maximum commercial FAR of 2.0 and allows a variety of neighborhood-scale commercial uses. The surrounding uses include a mix of residential, commercial, community facility and open space. Next slide. So Development Site Three is located at, sorry, located at 467 Vermont Street and 426 Wyona Street on Blake Avenue between Wyona and Vermont Street. One-in-two family homes are to the south. Next slide. Development Site consists of a vacant city-owned lot of approximately 4,000 square feet with a 200-foot frontage along Blake, a wide street and twenty-foot frontages along Wyona and Vermont Street, both narrow streets. Next slide. So the development will be one building with two wings with a shared common cellar and an entrance yard along Blake Avenue. There will be approximately ten affordable rental units in the building. Next slide. So Wing A on the left will front Wyona Street and will be three stories and approximately thirty-two feet tall. Wing B on the right will front Vermont Street and will be four stories and approximately forty-two feet tall. The development FAR will be 2.13. The unit mix will be three studios, three one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms with approximately 8,500 square feet of residential floor area. Bicycle parking will be provided on the first floor. Next slide. So both front yards will be set back to align with the adjacent buildings. And the ground floor was raised approximately three feet to provide more privacy to the ground floor units as well as an access ramp. And next slide, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lilia. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Delos.
Thanks for the presentation. Do we know the AMI target levels for the units?
Yes, so we don't have specific AMIs, but they're aiming for a mix of incomes up to eighty percent. And then for the majority of the units will be earning up to sixty percent, including a mix of individual and family earning between thirty, forty and fifty. So they're, they're still working out the AMIs, but there's going to be a mix.
Okay, I look forward to that information when it comes back. Thanks.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thanks, Lilia. In terms of the design, you know, I think of the buildings, I think Site Two and Three look fine. They're pretty contextual and modest designs. When it gets to Site One, things seem to have gone a bit out of control. And I don't know if it's the same architect, but maybe they could take a look at that and maybe bring them more into alignment with, with the other two designs.
Sure, we can mention that to HPD and the architect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, this application is certified.
The fourth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment and special permit in Brooklyn Community District Four. Our presenter is Suri Plappken.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is an application by Sidem Inc. and 3210 Willoughby LLC for a series of land use actions, including a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment and a special permit to facilitate the development of a nine-story, eighty-two-thousand-square-foot residential building with ninety-five affordable dwelling units at 1250 Willoughby Avenue and a fourteen-thousand-square-foot enlargement of an existing four-story industrial building. Next slide, please. The project area is located at 349 Sedam Street and Northwestern Bushwick in Community District Four, close to the borders of Brooklyn Community District One, Greenpoint, Williamsburg to the west, and Queens Community District Five, Ridgewood to the, to the north. Next slide, please. The project area is at the intersection of industrial and residential areas and is surrounded by a mix of residential, commercial, industrial and community facility uses. The area to the north and west of the site is an industrial area typified by one-story warehouses with light industrial and commercial uses and non-conforming three-story multifamily buildings. The area to the south and east of the site consists of two-to-three-story row houses and multifamily buildings. Retail is concentrated along Wycoth Avenue, an active commercial corridor just north of the project site, characterized by three-story multifamily buildings with ground floor retail, one-story converted warehouses and four-story converted loft buildings. A six-story, ninety-four-foot-tall school abuts the project area to the south. Next slide, please. The project area is at the eastern edge of a large M11 district that extends west into east Williamsburg and north into Masbeth, Queens, and includes the 900-acre North Brooklyn IBC. M11 is a low-density manufacturing district that allows one FAR of light industrial and commercial uses and permits limited community facility uses. The project area also abuts an R6 zoning district that extends south and east to cover the majority of the Bushwick neighborhood. R6 districts are medium-density, non-contactual zoning districts under which housing may be built according to height factor or quality housing bulk regulations. Under height factor regulations, residential uses are allowed a maximum FAR of 2.43 with height governed by a sloping sky exposure plane. Under Quality Housing Regulations, on narrow streets defined as less than seventy-five feet wide, residential uses are allowed at a maximum of 2.2 FAR and on wide streets they are permitted at a maximum of residential, or at a maximum of 3.0 FAR. Nearby public facilities include PS 123, the elementary school abutting the project area to the south, Maria Hernandez Park, a seven-acre park located one block southwest of the project area, a United States Post Office two blocks east of the project area on Wycoth Avenue and Wycoth Heights Medical Center four blocks east of the project area on Wycoth Avenue. The project area is well-served by public transportation. The L train runs along Wycoth Avenue and the project area is approximately two blocks to the east of the Jefferson Avenue Station and three blocks to the west of the Decalb Avenue Station. The B-13, B-38 and B-57 bus routes also serve the project area along Wycoth, Decalb and Flushing Avenues respectively. There are also two nearby city bike stations on Wycoth Avenue. Next slide, please. The proposed project area consists of Block 3210, Lots 15 to 21, 48, 51 and part of Lot 1. Project area is located approximately on, sorry, the project area is located mid-block on Block 3210 bounded by Willoughby Avenue to the west, Sidem Street to the east, Wycoth Avenue to the north and Irving Avenue to the south. Next slide, please. On the top left, you can see Lot 51, a fifteen-thousand-square-foot lot improved with an approximately forty-three-thousand-square-foot light manufacturing loft building. The building is occupied with tenants that include furniture manufacturers and artists. On the top right, on the right-hand side of the image, you can see Lot 48, a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot unimproved lot used for parking. On the bottom left, you can see Lots 16 to 21, each of which are twenty-five-hundred-square-feet unimproved lots used for parking. You can also see Lot 15, a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot lot improved with a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot two-story residential building with two dwelling units. On the bottom right, you can see Lot 1, a forty-five-thousand-square-foot lot improved with an approximately thirty-eight-thousand-square-foot four-story community facility building occupied by elementary school PS 123. Next slide, please. The project area consists of two contiguous development sites located mid-block on Block 3210 on a thirty-two-thousand-square-foot, five-hundred-square-foot zoning lot. The two development sites are commonly owned but will be developed separately. On the left, you can see the Willoughby Development Site, approximately fifteen-thousand square feet, and it is vacant and used currently for parking and storage. On the right, you can see the manufacturing enlargement site, approximately seventeen-thousand-five-hundred square feet, which is improved with a two-story, two-and-four-story, forty-three-thousand-square-foot light manufacturing building. Next slide, please. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a new affordable residential building on the Willoughby Development Site and the enlargement of the existing industrial building at the Sidem Manufacturing Enlargement Site. Next slide, please. The proposed Willoughby Development is a new nine-story residential building at 1250 Willoughby Avenue that would contain approximately eighty-two-thousand square feet of residential floor area with an FAR of 5.5. The proposed building has a height of ninety feet. It will contain approximately ninety-five affordable dwelling units developed under the HPD's M-Squared Mixed Middle Income Program, which funds the construction of new rental housing affordable to low, moderate and middle-income families. The applicants have selected MIH Option 1 for the proposed development, which requires affordable housing to be provided equivalent to twenty-five percent of the residential floor area, developed an average of sixty percent AMI with ten percent at forty percent AMI. Next slide, please. Here you can see another view of the proposed residential building. Next slide, please. The proposed manufacturing enlargement site would enlarge the third and fourth floors and add a new fifth floor to the existing manufacturing building at 349 Sedam Street. The proposed enlargement would add approximately fourteen-thousand square feet of additional floor area, increasing the building's total, total area from forty-three square feet, or total height from forty-three, sorry, total floor area from forty-three-thousand square feet to fifty-six-thousand square feet with an FAR of 3.23. The building's height would increase from fifty-nine to sixty-seven feet. The proposed enlargement would permit the applicants to preserve existing uses in the building and increase the building's viability with additional light industrial space. While the applicants have not yet marketed the space to potential tenants, they anticipate that the proposed tenants in the enlargement would be similar to the existing tenants such as upholsters and local artisans. Next slide, please. Here you can see another view of the existing industrial building. Next slide, please. The actions necessary to facilitate the project include a zoning map amendment from M11 to R70, M15 or MX21, M15 and R6, a zoning text amendment to Appendix F for mandatory inclusionary housing, a zoning text amendment to ZR 12390 to establish a special mixed-use district MX21 and a zoning special permit pursuant to ZR 74522 to reduce parking to facilitate affordable housing, 533, to reduce parking to facilitate affordable housing. Next slide, please. The applicants propose a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M11 zoning district to an R70, M15 zoning district or MX21, an M15 zoning district and an R6 zoning district. The proposed R70, M15 zoning district would be mapped along the Willoughby Avenue frontage. The applicant proposes to amend Section 12390 of the zoning resolution to establish a special mixed-use district MX21. MX districts permit a wide variety of uses, including residential, commercial and manufacturing uses, and R70 would permit residential development at a maximum FAR of 5.6 for developments with permanent affordable housing under the MIH program. R70 zoning districts permit a maximum base height of ninety-five feet with a maximum building height of one-hundred-and-ten or one-hundred-and-fifteen feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is required for fifty percent of the building's dwelling units. The proposed R70 zoning district would match the existing built form of PS 123, which is approximately ninety-four feet tall and is located on Lot 1, just south of the, just south of the proposed residential development. It would complement, also complement the surrounding uses, including PS 123 and multifamily residential uses on the other side of Willoughby Avenue. The proposed M15 zoning district would be mapped along the Sidem Street frontage. M15 is a moderate-density light manufacturing district that allows five FAR of industrial and commercial uses and 6.5 FAR of community facility uses. The maximum base height in M15 districts is eighty-five feet or six stories, whichever is less, and the maximum building height is subject to a sky exposure plane. Parking is not required in M15 districts. The increase in density would permit the fourteen-thousand-square-foot expansion of the manufacturing site to the proposed 3.23 FAR with a height of sixty-seven feet. This expansion would be similar to nearby buildings, including the existing school and 70 Wycoth Avenue, a four-story, sixty-foot-tall residential loft conversion, one-hundred-and-thirty feet to the north of the proposed development area. But given the project's area, project area's proximity to transit and an active commercial corridor, the applicant proposes mapping higher-density manufacturing district with lowered parking requirements that would be consistent with the surrounding built context. The proposed R6 district would be mapped to a depth of twenty-five feet into Lot 1, which would remove the existing split lot condition on Lot 1 and bring the community facility use into conformance. The proposed zoning map amendment would transition from an M11 district to an R70, M15 and M15 districts, which would be consistent with the surrounding mixed-use context and would further area-wide planning goals of promoting mixed-use development with affordable housing and job growth on underutilized properties near transit. The applicants propose to map the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area by creating a new map two for Brooklyn Community District Four, an Appendix F of the zoning resolution. Pursuant to the MIH program, the applicants have selected MIH Option 1 for which affordable housing must be provided equivalent to twenty-five percent of the residential floor area at an average of sixty percent of AMI with ten percent at forty percent AMI. Next slide, please. All right, this is the MIH map that was just discussed that you can see here. Next slide, please. The proposed special permit to reduce parking to facilitate affordable housing within the transit zone pursuant to ZR 74533 is necessary to waive the residential parking requirement of thirty-six accessory off-street spaces for the approximately seventy-two non-income-restricted units above eighty percent of AMI at the proposed Willoughby Development Site. The findings for the special permit include that the parking waiver will facilitate a development with at least twenty percent income-restricted units, as determined in consultation with HPD, will not cause traffic congestion and will not have undue adverse effects on residents, businesses or community facilities in the surrounding area, including the availability of parking spaces for such uses. That concludes my presentation. Thank you and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Suri. Questions about this proposal? Not seeing any? Then this application is certified. Thank you.
Okay, the fifth item on the agenda is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Two, and our presenter is Andy Cantu.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can we start on Slide Two, please, Jeff? Sorry, for some reason I can't see what everyone else is saying. So I'm going to assume we're on Slide Two.
Yes.
Okay, this is a private application by 65 Spring Realty LLC for a good faith marketing special permit to allow Use Group Six retail uses on portions of the ground floor and cellar of an existing five-story mixed residential and commercial building located at 65 Spring Street in Soho, Manhattan Community District Two. Slide Three, please. The project site is located in an M15B district, which allows an FAR of 5.0 for community, sorry, for commercial manufacturing uses and 6.5 for community facility uses. The M15B district limits uses in the space below the floor level of the second story to certain commercial and light manufacturing uses. Buildings within the vicinity of the project site are typically mixed-use loft buildings ranging from three to eight stories in height with a variety of uses, including ground floor retail, warehouses, restaurants and bars, commercial offices, joint live-work quarters for artists and Use Group Two residential units. Retail uses are allowed through a variety of mechanisms, including the 74781 Good Faith Marketing Permit and the 74711 and 74712 Landmark Preservation Special Permits. As we noted at the last review session, the significant mismatch between the five-decade-old manufacturing zoning in Soho and the existing conditions, including the Good Faith Marketing provisions and the requirement to keep storefronts vacant. had become somewhat of a stumbling block for businesses in Soho and NoHo. The somewhat onerous and outdated zoning was frequently cited as a barrier by businesses, property owners, and local bids during the envisioned Soho-NoHo process. And as Dylan mentioned at the beginning of your meeting, a condition that is exacerbated by the economic conditions in light of COVID-nineteen. Slide Four, please. The site, which is located adjacent to the downtown six Spring Street stop, is on the north side of Spring Street between Crosby Street to the west and Lafayette Street to the east. The zoning lot is approximately nineteen hundred forty-five square feet and contains a five-story tenement-style walk-up building built in the late nineteenth century with ground-floor retail and eight Use Group Two apartments on the upper floors. The first floor contains two retail units with one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet of total floor area. The existing retail space, which consists of two units, have been in continuous operation since at least nineteen forty-two and is legally non-conforming. The cellar contains one thousand three hundred twenty-nine square feet of accessory space for the first-floor retail uses and associated mechanical space. Slide Five, please. Here, the zoning lot is in the dashed yellow line, and the proposed expansion is in the solid yellow. The applicant is proposing to expand the ground floor and cellar to the rear property line, increasing total floor area by seven hundred and nineteen square feet. The first floor would be enlarged by three hundred forty-four square feet from one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet to seventeen hundred and twenty-one square feet. The proposed renovation would allow the creation of two ADA accessible bathrooms on the ground floor. A new stairwell leading to the cellar would be accessed from the rear yard via Lafayette Street. Slide Six, please. The cellar would be expanded by three hundred and seventy-five square feet, again to the rear property line, and a rear exit stairwell would be created leading to the first floor. After completion of the proposed project, the building would contain a total of eight thousand ninety-five zoning square feet or four point one-six FAR, an increase of zero point one-eight FAR. Slide Seven, please. Zoning Resolution Section seventy-four seven eighty-one requires the applicant to undertake and document a six-month or one-year marketing effort to rent the subject space to a conforming use at fair market rents prior to filing the land use application. Such efforts include, but are not limited to, advertising in local and citywide press, listing the space with brokers, and informing local and citywide industry groups. These efforts are required to be pursued for a period of no less than six months for buildings under thirty-six hundred square feet and one year for buildings over thirty-six hundred square feet. The building at Sixty-Five Spring occupies less than thirty-six hundred square feet of lot area and therefore was required to be marketed for six months. Slide Eight, please. Beginning in April twenty eighteen until June twenty nineteen, a period beyond the required six months, the applicant advertised the availability of space for manufacturing, service, industrial, and other conforming uses at eighty dollars per square foot for the three hundred and forty-four square foot first-floor expansion. The three hundred and seventy-five square feet of cellar space was included at no additional cost. The applicant's marketing efforts included placing weekly advertisements in The New York Times and The Villager Times, listing the space online with two brokerage firms, one which specializes in manufacturing, and mailing information to various industry groups, such as the New York City Economic Development Corporation and the Manufacturers Association. According to the applicant, despite these efforts, there has been no success securing as-of-right uses for the space as of the date of the application's filing. Four inquiries from interested parties were documented. One was seeking space for non-conforming use, two determined that the space was too small for their purposes, and the fourth prospective tenant seeking a short-term lease was unwilling to provide evidence of financial solvency and thus was not considered creditworthy and was then rejected by the applicant. And the applicant can provide additional details on their marketing efforts when this project comes back for a hearing. Slide Nine, please. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Questions from the Commission? I think this is a good example of at a time when we see the challenges facing retail, when we have an owner wanting to add ADA accessible bathrooms, just the hurdles that the antiquated zoning places in its way. And with that, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay, the sixth item on the agenda is a referral of a non-yield authorization in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Stephen Johnson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by the owners of the Gramercy condominium located at twenty-five East Twenty-First Street. They are seeking a commission authorization to waive the use preservation requirements in Section fifteen twenty-one of the zoning resolution. The site is outlined in red in the picture. It's located at twenty-five East Twenty-First Street in Ladies Mile Historic District of Manhattan Community Board Five. The site is an eleven-story commercial condominium with one unit on each floor, and the applicant is seeking to convert the entire building from Use Group Six office use to Use Group Two residential. Next slide, please. The building outlined in red on this area map is bounded by East Twenty-First Street, East Twenty-Second Broadway, and Park Avenue South. The Ladies Mile Historic District is identified by the dashed blue line with the blue shading. Madison Square Park is located two blocks to the north, and Gramercy Park is one block to the east. The surrounding area is predominantly zone M one-five M, in which residential use is not permitted as of right. The area contains a variety of mixed-use buildings with commercial and residential and a very few light manufacturing uses. Any of the residential buildings are small-scale, mid-block buildings typically between three and twelve stories tall with ground-floor retail uses. The built form in the area includes a wide range of typologies and densities with approximately half the buildings being residential or mixed commercial and residential, and the other half being fully commercial buildings. On the subject block, there are several four-to-eight-story low-rise residential buildings, ten-to-fifteen-story loft-type buildings with mixed uses, as well as several taller mixed-use buildings. On this particular block of East Twenty-First Street, sixteen of the twenty-five buildings contain some level of residential use, including approximately a hundred and thirty-eight units within the manufacturing district. Next slide, please. Slide Three, please. Thank you. So we have some photos around East Twenty-First Street here. Gives you some idea of the existing streetscape characteristics. You see several loft-style buildings typical of this part of the historic district and the varying heights to the number of the buildings. There's a varying heights among the different buildings on the block. Next slide, please. So the site consists of an eleven-story building plus cellar with ten commercial condominium units and eleven individual tax lots. Each unit is owner-occupied. The site is a four thousand three hundred and forty-five-square-foot interior lot measuring about forty-four feet by one hundred feet. The building rises ten stories and a hundred and thirty-three feet, and then is set back at the eleven-story penthouse, bringing the building height to a hundred and forty-three feet. The building contains about forty thousand five hundred square feet with an FAR of nine point four-two. The current zoning permits a maximum FAR of five. The building was completed in nineteen oh four. It's a neo-Renaissance-style store and loft. Its architectural style, scale, materials, and details are features that contribute to the architectural and historic character of the historic district. In nineteen eighty-three, the building was converted from single ownership to ten commercial condominiums. The building is currently owner-occupied and with one unit on each floor and one duplex unit on floors ten and eleven. The cellar is used primarily for accessory storage. There are two elevators in the building, including a freight elevator. Next slide, please. So for buildings within an M one-five M district, an applicant can apply to convert an existing building or portion of an existing building to residential use via a chair certification. To do so, they need to adhere to these preservation requirements, as you can see on this slide. In this case, on a lot of four thousand three hundred and fifty square feet, the applicant would need to preserve at least thirty-three point three percent of the floor area as commercial. Next slide, please. So this is a section of the proposed one-hundred-percent residential building. In this case, the existing one-hundred-percent commercial building would be required to maintain approximately four floors of commercial space, and this is the orange color that demonstrates that on the picture. That part would have to be retained as commercial use. By pursuing the commission authorization, the applicant is seeking to waive the requirement for the commercial use and allow for the conversion of the entire building to residential use. Next slide, please. So this drawing shows the applicant's proposal to convert floors one through ten plus the penthouse from existing commercial use to Use Group Two residential. The proposed conversion will require alteration work on the building to bring it up to code, but the building envelope will remain unchanged. The building does contain an existing legal non-compliant condition on floors six through ten, where the building meets the street line, but current zoning would require a twenty-foot setback, and you can see that non-compliant condition in the diagonal hatching in the section. The proposed conversion would create ten dwelling units, one per floor, except for the duplex unit, which is the tenth-floor and penthouse level. The first-floor unit would be about four thousand two hundred and forty feet. Floors two through nine would each have about three thousand nine hundred and forty square feet, and the tenth-floor plus penthouse would be approximately five thousand one hundred and seventy feet. Next slide, please. So because the building is located within the historic district, the City Planning Commission may waive the commercial preservation requirements subject to these following conditions. The building is either a landmark or within a historic district. You must have required documents from the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and they must comply with the density requirements set forth in the zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the appropriate LPC documents, and they are in your packages. In order to grant the authorization, the commission shall find that such waiver shall have minimal adverse effects on the conforming uses located within the building and in the surrounding area. The commission has previously provided this authorization for five properties within this surrounding area. The most recent of such approvals came in twenty sixteen. However, none of these approved authorizations were for conversion of an entire building. And now I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Vice-Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Stephen, so the I think I know the answer to this, but you know, I'm just looking for confirmation, I guess. The requirement to maintain and preserve the building will continue to be that of the developers even after all of the condos are sold?
Yes, yes. So there's a continuing maintenance plan that stays with the building no matter who owns the building.
Well, it stays with the building, but who specifically? It would be the developer, right? I mean, even though the units would be sold to third parties?
If they were, if they were sold, yes. So whoever, so there's no developer for the building? Do each of the condo units are owner-occupied? So each
Oh, okay, right.
Which one has their own floor on the building?
Okay, got it, yeah.
Commissioner Deloos.
So two questions. So what's the current status in terms of use of the building?
This, it's a commercial use.
Is it occupied or is it vacant?
Yes, it's completely occupied by the owners.
Okay, and is there a plan for relocation for those businesses or?
They're planning, I can verify with the applicant team, but I believe they're planning on staying with the building. So the owners would be profiting if they were to flip the building or move out of the building.
Okay. And the total square footage, repeat it one more time? So I mean, if we're shifting the use, and it's going to go residential. Explain to me why, remind me why it's not triggering MIH?
It doesn't trigger MIH for a few reasons. So when MIH was originally established back in twenty sixteen, the commission and department stated that MIH would only be applied to zoning map changes that encouraged the creation of substantial new housing in medium and high-density districts and to special permits, then increased housing residential capacity. So this is an authorization. So in the authorization, we had also stated publicly that these actions for MIH would involve not only the commission but the city council. So with an authorization, city council is not involved with the review of the applications. So it kind of, it would go beyond the scope of the program if this was, if MIH was applied to this authorization.
Seems like something we should think about, but I hear you in terms of this particular application.
Well, it's something that we've discussed in the past and always met the same, very coherent, but not always welcome response from the agency.
Exactly.
I'll note that it is the question that we posed to ourselves before bringing this forward. We had looked at that. Commissioner Rameshaw.
So thank you for the presentation. Just want to understand the plans for a second. I guess all, every one of these units is going to have an open floor plan, I guess, one bedroom in the front. The reason I ask is because I'm just curious, how does light in there work for something like this? Because there's a lot-lined windows, and my understanding is lot-lined windows don't count towards light in there. So is there a reason, is that the reason why they have an open floor plan towards the rear?
I don't know if, I could talk to the applicant team and see if they've, if the plans that were included in briefing packages, what they agreed for the future residential buildings, but they are loft-style buildings with windows in the front. And I can confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
I just wanted to ask, is there a possible scenario where the majority of the building flips to residential, but the ground floor is retained as retail?
I believe it's within the commission's purview to do that if they see fit.
Because isn't there a fairly strong retail market at the base along that street?
Yes, I mean, it's really, sometimes when we say areas are mixed-use, they're not all that mixed-use, but this is truly a mixed-use area, and it has a nice commercial element and residential element to it also.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then, given that this is a request for an authorization, we'll refer this to the community board for forty-five days.
All right, the seventh item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a non-yield modification of a previously approved large-scale residential development in Manhattan Community District Three. Matthew Pietrus is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by Clinton Broome Development LLC, coming back from referral. The proposal is for a minor modification to an LSRD that would facilitate two new one-hundred-percent affordable buildings and open space improvements. Next slide, please. As you might recall, the project is located in the Lower East Side. As you might recall, the project is located in the Lower East Side, south of the Williamsburg Bridge approach, and adjacent to the new Essex Crossing developments. Next slide. The project area is contiguous with the boundary of the large scale, shown in white. The zoning lot is shown in blue, and the footprint of the two new developments is shown in red. The LSRD contains a mix of uses ranging from a NYCHA building to the Abrams Performing Arts Center and a senior residential building. And the zoning lot is shown in blue and currently contains six buildings, three 26-story buildings, each containing 200 affordable apartments. These are collectively known as the Grand Street Guild. A refuse building is located on the northeast corner of the zoning lot and services these developments. There are also two structures, one containing two levels of parking and a one-story building that formerly contained childcare services. And both of these buildings are to be demolished to make way for the new buildings. Next slide. To facilitate these developments, the applicant seeks approval of a modification to the large scale to reflect several changes to the site plan. Next slide. The first of these modifications is to merge three parcels to create a new zoning lot. Next slide. This is the site plan of the existing LSRD. The development site currently consists of three zoning lots, which are shown here in blue, purple, and orange. Next slide. The proposed modification would combine these three zoning lots into one zoning lot, and that would be called parcel three. Next slide. The second modification would reflect several physical changes to the area. The first of these changes would be the addition of two proposed buildings that would be constructed upon approval of the application. Next slide. The two new developments would be 100% affordable buildings containing up to 480 apartments, with also 6,000 square feet of community facility space. The massings for those new developments are shown in blue. Next slide. The first building is called Building 35, and it would be located on the southeast corner of Broom and Clinton Streets. The development site currently contains a two-story parking structure, which is shown here. Next slide. On this site, the applicant proposes a new 15-story 100% affordable residential building. The building would contain up to 235 affordable apartments, which are intended mostly for families making an average of less than 60% AMI. These units would be a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The building would also replace 126 of the parking spaces on the first two floors. Next slide. The second building, called Building 36, would be located on the south side of Broom Street on the mid-block and would replace the existing one-story structure, which is shown here. Next slide. On this site, the applicant proposes a new 16-story 100% affordable residential building with ground floor community facility space. The building is intended to cater to seniors earning an average of 50% AMI. It would contain up to 245 studio and one-bedroom apartments and 6,000 square feet of community space on the ground floor. Next slide. The second modification will reflect improvements to the existing open spaces on the site. Next slide. There is existing open space on the block that is accessible to the public, and as part of this application, the applicants propose a series of improvements in the areas adjacent to the proposed buildings. The applicant intends to add two new community gathering spaces to the south of each of the proposed buildings, as well as passive lawn space, shaded seating areas along the east-west and north-south corridors, and a children's play area behind Building 36. All of these spaces will continue to be open to the public as they are today. At certification, Commissioner Ortiz raised a concern regarding the proposed building's location at the western end of the east-west through-block connection. Throughout the pre-certification process, the applicant worked with the department to ensure that the design of this area balanced the desired program of the building with a consistent street wall along Clinton Street and pedestrian circulation throughout the block. Next slide. This image shows the proposed street wall on Clinton. Here, the area would contain approximately 25,000 square feet of floor area for the affordable development, including ground floor amenities space for residents. The ground floor space on Clinton Street would be occupied by a large meeting room for residents, which would have a transparent facade, and the applicant feels that this would help to activate the street. Next slide. With respect to circulation, the proposed improvements include a new ADA accessible passageway connecting Grant and Broom Streets. This north-south through-block connection helps to break up the large width of the block, while also providing accessibility, which does not currently exist. The department notes, too, that while this block is a large one, its length along Clinton is 300 feet, which is typical of the area and usually not broken up in other instances. The width of the block, however, is about 650 feet and is much longer than surrounding blocks. By providing north-south connections between Grant and Broom Streets, the proposed improvements create a layout that is more consistent with the surrounding blocks. Next slide, please. Finally, the applicant believes that the proposed open space improvements behind Building 35 would provide a major community gathering space, which does not currently exist. The owner plans to utilize this new space and its added amenities as a space for larger community gatherings and events, further activating the space within the block. The applicant believes that activating this portion of the space results in a superior experience than the current passageway, which is currently flanked by two blank facades. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of that space. And the applicant's full rationale with additional images is provided in your materials. Next slide, please. The last modification of the LSRD would include adding an existing refuse building to the site plan. Next slide, please. The refuse building currently services the three existing Grand Street Guild developments and was completed in 2013. It occupies about 3,500 square feet on the southwest corner of Broom and Pitt Streets. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the changes to the large scale. It shows the existing large-scale site plan on the left and the proposed large-scale site plan on the right. The buildings shaded in dark gray on the proposed site plan represent the buildings that would be added to the plan. The dark shaded buildings with red numbering are the two new buildings to be constructed, and the dark shaded building with black numbering is the existing refuse building. Next slide, please. During referral, Manhattan Community Board 3 voted to approve the application with the following conditions. The first is related to requiring a private contract between the owner of the Grand Street Guild and the residents. The second is related to affordability. To this note, the applicant intends to use HPD's Ella and Sarah programs as part of this proposal. Funding allocation and approval, or sorry, funding allocation and approval of those programs are subject to HPD and will be finalized after approval of the application. Finally, the community board encouraged the applicant to hire locally, and as part of HPD and HDC term sheets, the owner and contractors will participate in the Hire NYC program during construction. This will help connect the local individuals to the job opportunities created by the project. The applicant will also reach out to the Lower East Side Employment Network as an additional resource for recruitment for construction and operational job opportunities. The applicant's full response to these conditions is outlined in your materials as well. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate your, you know, focusing on the loss of the continual pedestrian path, which I find, you know, I, I think we can probably agree to disagree, but I would not characterize the loss of, you know, a really well-worn path as an improvement. I recognize that they likely need the FAR, and that they're looking to make improvements in other places, but, you know, my experience that that connection is a strong one. And I just really sort of mourn the loss of the lack of connectivity. When we have something special like that, it's just a shame to lose it.
Any other comments? Then with that, I would request approval from the commission to send a letter to the Department of Buildings approving this minor modification. Oh, Vice Chair Knuckles, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was raising my hand to approve.
Great, okay. If I could just ask for those in favor of approving, to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We will send the letter to the Department of Buildings.
Thank you, everyone.
The eighth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in the Bronx, Community District 1. Manny Legarres is here to present.
Madam Chair, I'm recusing this item.
That's right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is the 131 Concord Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. The applicant is a private applicant of First Concord Realty LLC, and they're seeking a zoning map amendment from M12 to R70, also a zoning text amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution to designate the rezoning area as an MIH area. The project area was owned M11 in 1961. It was rezoned M12 in '64. And in 1998, the City Planning Commission approved of disposition of city-owned property, which is currently Lot 18 in the development site. Next, please. The project site is located in the Mont Haven section of Bronx Community District Number 1 in the South Bronx. Next. It's on Block 2578, the northeast corner. As you can see, it's outlined in brownish color. A block bonded by East 145th Street to the north, Concord Avenue to the east, East 144 to the south, and Jackson Avenue forms the western boundary. It's a approximately 15,000 square foot lot consisting portions of lots 15, 16, and 18. Immediately adjacent to the project area is an R71 zoning district. And there is a residential building with 60 units there. As you move south, you have industrial buildings, since it's an M12 zoning district. Across Concord Avenue, you have one and two family homes. And across 145th Street, that entire block is a school for career development, I believe it's the Rappaport School. And north of 145th Street is essentially residential. And as you go below 104th Street is manufacturing, basically low-density, high-lot coverage. Next. This is a, load out of the area. Let's see more of what's happening. You have the project area and the development site. Development site is outlined in blue. To the left, which is the west, you have St. Mary's Park. There's an approximately 35-acre park. You have basketball courts, baseball fields. You have an indoor swimming pool. You have barbecue pits, et cetera. And to the northeast, as you see the Crossroads Plaza, which was certified back in 2012, that was a mixed-use development containing 341 dwelling units, as well as a commercial. Just south of that, you have the 147th Street rezoning. That was a rezoning from M12 and M13 to R8X. And below 144th Street, you see outlined the Bronx jail site. And outlined in purple is the Fort Morris Industrial Business Zone. Next, please. And this is your area map, where you see again, the land use is basically to the north of the site are predominantly residential, and as you go south, predominantly manufacturing. Next. And here are photographs of the project area and development site. The photo number one, you can see all the trees, that is a vacant lot, and it's the lot that I referred to earlier that was approved by the City Planning Commission for disposition in 1998. Nothing ever occurred here, and the applicant purchased this property in 2012. A photograph number two, you can see the two-story vacant building. That's a mixed-use building, currently vacant. And just right of that, right of that is the house of worship, which is currently under renovation. Next slide, please. The photo number four is, is your better look at the lot number 16, I just mentioned. Two buildings currently vacant. And lot number five, photograph number five, is the garage. It's not part of the development site, but it is within the project area. Next slide, please. This is your existing and proposed zoning map. On the left, you have M12, which allows industrial and commercial to a 2.0 FAR, also allows a community city to use 2.8 FAR. On the right, the proposed, so in order for the applicant to develop an 11-story building with 92 residential units, he needs a higher zoning designation. So the R70 maximum height of 115 feet allows the developer to start this building. Next slide, please. Okay, this is your site plan. I mentioned that it was an 11-story, quality housing building with 92 units, will be 22, I mean, 29 enclosed and unenclosed parking spaces. The applicant did not select an option of one or two, because he's in communication with the local council member Ayala, and is looking to guidance from the council member. Next slide, please. And this is your first floor plan. On the lower right-hand corner, you see that you have the residential entrance, you have mechanical rooms, amenities, et cetera. To the left of that, you have a portion of your enclosed parking. And to the rear, the rear yard is actually the rest of the parking. Once again, it's 29 accessory parking spaces. Next slide, please. And this is your elevation. I already mentioned the ground floor, where it consists of floors 2 through 9, consists of 10 residential units each, and floors 10 and 11 will consist of six. Next slide, please. This is the rendering, which is actually what the building would look like. And there is a preliminary apartment distribution of 16 studios, 42 one-bedroom units, 24 two-bedroom units, and 10 three-bedroom units. I also want to mention that there's a rooftop recreation area, approximately 2,500 square feet. Are there any questions?
Thanks for the presentation, Manny.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Delos.
Manny, did you, did you mention the MIH option that they were interested in?
No, they haven't selected an option. They're in talks with the local council member to get guidance from the council. But they're actually giving, providing a range. It'll be 28 units, 30%, and no, 23, and 28 at, 25% is the first one. And at 30%, there'll be 28.
What's the local AMI?
The local AMI is approximately $22,000, $22,000 per year.
Okay.
So. A quick, a quick point of clarification on the option the applicant is seeking. They're seeking both option one and option two as part of the application for Appendix F as part of the text amendment to give themselves flexibility during this. to give themselves flexibility during this time of the year.
Okay, thank you. Actually, there's one more question I had. For the disposition from when it was a city-owned lot in 1998.
Yes.
That didn't go anywhere for 14 years. What was it, what was supposed to happen?
Well, at that time, it was just a disposition in order to have a developer come in and just put something. The area was very, was blighted at the time, and this is but that never, that never materialized.
And so when this owner purchased the lot in 2012, there were no restrictions connected to that disposition from 1998?
I am not aware of that, but I can check that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Marin.
Thank you. So Manny, a couple of questions. The, the lot that was said owned and offered, is that one of the lots where one of the religious institutions were situated?
Well, there is a house of worship currently on the development site. It's a one-story building. I passed by there this Sunday, yesterday, just to make sure that it, you know, it wasn't operational.
Is that the Luz de Camino, or is that the Diaz de Culto?
I have no idea regarding the name of the church, but I can find that out for you. I just, you know, the application just said house of worship.
So is the, the building proposed to go up against the Diallo auto repair?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then the existing house of worship, are they going to be incorporated into the, into this building?
I, well, that was not mentioned in the application. I can speak to the applicant and get additional information from him and have it ready for you when it comes back.
Yeah, I'd be interested in finding that out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Just for Commissioner Marin, the, looking on the Google Maps, looks like it's Luz de Camino is the one immediate, immediately next to the, to the
That's correct, but then there's a second one that says Diaz de Culto. So I was just trying to figure out what's going to happen to the institution. Because there, there's, there's been concerns about churches not being able to come back into existing buildings. And that has been a real concern in the Bronx. So I'm just trying to identify if the church is coming back in.
Okay, we'll have the Bronx Office follow up on that. Moving on, unless Sean wants to. Nope, okay. So for consideration, on, on Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, staff have prepared reports for 312 Coney Island Avenue rezoning. Thank you, production. 803 Rockaway Avenue rezoning. The Bedford Avenue overlay extension, DeKalb Commons, and the mansion restaurant text amendment, and the special flushing waterfront district. I see Commissioner Bernie has raised his hand.
Yeah, Ryan, on the Bedford Avenue overlay, the public hearing, they said they would get back to us with a revised facade design. And I did see there was a letter, but there was no design attached. So I wonder what's happening there.
Okay, we can follow up with them. They don't have much time on that, but it will, if we receive, we'll ask, and then if we receive something, we can circulate a revision.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, with a vote scheduled, is the 5902 Borden Avenue special permit. And here to give a short presentation, Alexis Wheeler.
And actually, before Alexis gives her presentation, I would like to note for the commission that the way in which this applicant and its representatives approached this application for a special permit serves as an object lesson in how not to pursue a CPC special permit. Throughout the process, DCP staff, our request for information fell on deaf ears. It wasn't until the public hearing and your incisive questions that the applicant and its representatives appeared to take seriously the need to provide requested information. So I thank you, Commissioners, for your effective questioning. Before our last review session, we finally received information, not from the applicant, but from the proposed operator of the self-storage facility. Information that we should have received far earlier in the process. I want to thank the city planning team, which has taken the information and analyzed how it aligns with the factors that the, that the commission may consider. Alexis is now going to share the department's analysis with the commission, as well as the department's conclusion that despite the sharp work of the applicant and its representatives, on balance, the required finding is met, and the special permit should be issued.
Thank you very much for those remarks, Chair Lago, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity for this final review of the considerations for the 5902 Borden Avenue self-storage special permit. Next slide, please. And again, to remind the commission, this is a private application by Home Depot for a special permit for a self-service storage facility. Next slide, please. And the site is in SubArea 2 of Appendix J, which is within the Masbeth IBZ. And next slide, please. As we step into the findings of 74932, I want to first clarify that in order to deem this special permit as appropriate, the considerations listed are not hierarchical and can be contemplated either holistically or individually by the commission when determining the appropriateness of the use. In balancing these qualities among these and other land use considerations, not all considerations are required to be satisfied. Next slide, please. And so as we review the key question about whether it achieves the economic development of the goals for the city, the construction sector has been one of the largest industrial employment shares in New York City's IBZs. Furthermore, the administration's New York Works Plan established a goal of supporting 240,000 construction jobs that will provide middle-income wages for thousands of New Yorkers. Additionally, supporting the construction industry is consistent with the administration's 10-point industrial action plan, which identifies the need to support infrastructure and services that are critical to the city's larger economy, such as construction. In addition to the non-commercial use of self-storage, small businesses, including construction, are among the likely users of the proposed storage facility. Small businesses frequently require small storage areas that are not otherwise available on the private market or do not have adequate storage capacity in their own facilities. This constraint is primarily due to high real estate prices in industrial and commercial zoning districts. Self-service, self-service storage facilities have a high utilization rate among small business owners, including contractors, who use these facilities to store building materials and tools. This benefit to local businesses supports the existing industrial base of the surrounding IBZ. Support is consistent with the city's economic development objectives for those areas subject to the special permit. The retail development anchored by a large hardware and building supply store is as of right, and the special permit pursuant to ZR Section 74932 to allow the self, the self-service storage portion of the proposed development is the sole land use action requested by the applicant. But this synergistic relationship between the hardware store and the self-storage facilities and the resulting support of small businesses, including those in this construction industry, make the uses altogether complementary and harmonious. While there is traditionally a low direct job number attributable to the self-storage facilities, the broader ecosystem still has a positive impact on the economic development sectors meant to be fostered by the IBZs. Next slide, please. And the administration's New York Work Plan also identified food production, warehousing, and distribution as important in active industrial sectors. These areas surrounding the proposed self-storage facility has experienced an increase in the number of distribution and logistics facilities, in addition to the existing smaller food and manufacturing and distribution companies in the area. Food distribution is one of the sectors utilizing these new facilities. There are, of course, many other significant segments of the industrial sector, including construction, which remains a leading sector in the Masbeth IBZ and is expected to be served by the proposed hardware and building supply store, as well as the self-storage facility. In addition to the distribution and logistics facilities, there has only been nominal development in the area, mostly at a single story in the past two decades. The amount of storage space anticipated to be used by small businesses represents more space than would be contained by a single-story warehouse on the subject property. Next slide, please. And the configuration of the zoning lot makes the self-storage facility an appropriate complementary use to the as-of-right hardware and building supply store. The as-of-right use is therefore a harmonious use in the IBZ that supports these small businesses, especially in the construction sector. The uses together are seen as a key driver to support the special permit. And without the large as-of-right hardware store, it would not necessarily be seen as appropriate in this location. Throughout the public review of the original text amendment to establish the self-storage special permit, the commission at that time articulated that the special permit should not serve to encourage self-storage facilities to locate closer to residential areas. The boundary of the Masbeth IBZ, where we are now, established in 2006, is a half-block to east of the site and one block to the south. Portions of M11 and M11D zoning districts mapped immediately adjacent to the IBZ both allow self-storage facilities as of right. These areas are both closer to an established residential neighborhood to the east of the project area. Preventing the sighting of this particular self-storage facility at this location could have an undesired effect of encouraging the sighting of a self-storage facility serving the adjacent large hardware store and the neighborhood in general in a less appropriate location. Next slide, please. The project area is proximate to several arterial highways, truck routes, and service roads. They're appropriate for access to their proposed development away from residential streets. The Queens Midtown Expressway, Maurice Avenue, and 58th Street are all designated truck routes. Masbeth has experienced a proliferation of distribution logistics facilities that rely on access to the city's freight transportation system. The proximity of the project area to designated truck routes also make the site well-suited to serve the transportation needs of these distribution and logistics facilities. This proximity was also an important factor in the applicant's desire to develop the large hardware store. And this increase in access for a varied customer base is what builds the synergies of the self-storage facility and the hardware store. Were the subject application not to include the hardware store, again, it is unlikely the commission's evaluation would be favorable. And next slide, please. The surrounding, the area surrounding the project site is currently not well-served by existing self-storage facilities. The surrounding area does not contain any other self-storage facilities, and the nearest facility is in Queens Community District 2, a couple of miles away in Long Island City. The proposed action would not result in self-storage facilities occupying a significant amount of land within the Masbeth IBZ. And to reiterate a point made earlier, this location will keep this use from locating further into nearby residential neighborhoods, where it is seen as less desirable. So ultimately, the hardware store is viewed as the harmonious use in the IBZ that supports small businesses, especially in the construction sector. And given the breadth of the aforementioned considerations, the department finds the special permit on this site is appropriate for the proposed self-storage use. Next slide, please. And this is just again to revisit some of the plan diagrams that we have received to date. The self-storage facility from Sun Borden Avenue with off-street loading for that use. Next slide, please. And this is a ground floor diagram provided by the architect and the storage operator, who has made a commitment in addition to reserving 35% of the storage space for small business usage to provide approximately 7,500 square feet in the ground floor. They've also stated that they will design the space in such a way that the industrial tenants can use the off-street loading for business needs. It's not demonstrated in the diagram to date, but it is something that they have made a commitment for. Next slide, please. And again, these elevational diagrams show the approximate location of the ground floor industrial space that has been promised. And this ends my presentation. I thank you all for your time today, and I open the floor to any questions.
Madam Chair, welcome. Questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
Alexis, I appreciate the detailed review of, of the findings. You know, certainly during the hearing when this came up and I asked the question about, from, from the representative from Home Depot, about, you know, what, what was the impetus for the self-storage? You know, the, the answer was very clear, which was it was purely a financial consideration for them. And, you know, that, quite honestly, that, that answer's weighing heavily on how I'm planning to vote on Wednesday. You know, the one thing I would say about how you've, you know, how you've laid things out, is that it, it could leave the impression that, that the combined use of self-storage next to a large hardware use would always meet the findings of the special permit. And I'm wondering if you want to unpack that a little bit, because I think there's more to it than, than that.
Certainly. I mean, I, I think that, I, I don't necessarily mean to illustrate that it would always be a, an approved coupling. I think that more than anything, we do need to see that there is a true underscore of success being realized in policy. If we look to the relatively recently approved JFK facility, in that case, you know, EDC had done a substantial amount of freight and air cargo research to better understand how that fits into a broader ecosystem. I think in this case, there is another case being made where it's, it's really about its position within a viable ecosystem. And in an area such as Masbeth, where you were well-positioned to all of the, many of the largest building sectors in New York City, being in Western Queens and being in Northern Brooklyn, you have really good access for the construction users that are, that are located in that area. And so I think that, again, there are kind of those, those geographic qualities that lend itself well to this synergy and coupling. But I, I do agree that that doesn't necessarily mean that in, in all cases, it will always, you know, be any sort of a rubber stamp to approval here.
I want to double down on that point. The special permit is case by case. And I think it was the wisdom of the commission in having and structuring the self-storage special permit in a way that has a relatively straightforward finding, but then a list of factors that the commission may consider. And I believe that that grew out of the fact, recalling the conversation at the time, that this, we didn't anticipate that these were going to be cookie-cutter applications and that factors that might weigh heavily in one location might not be as relevant in another. And so we allowed ourselves the discretion to consider a broad array of factors. I do think, given the newness of the special permit, it is going to be on this, on this application and going forward, especially incumbent upon us to review them, not as a rubber stamp, not as something routine, but rather as unique discretionary application. So I thank you for your question on that. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, I, I would have to agree with Commissioner Deloos. I think it's incumbent upon us to take their expert testimony at face value. I think it's incumbent upon us to take their expert testimony at face value. You know, we heard that the plan for self-storage was about trying to get the highest yield. It was only subsequent to our questioning that an argument was formed that laid out a fact pattern that enables them to comply with the special permit request. And I think I don't, this special permit, you know, is not, I don't think we want it as a, as you said, a fait accompli administrative hurdle that, you know, if you apply to, you get, we have those. And, you know, rather, it should be a stopgap measure to prevent the proliferation of storage facilities in these places where, you know, other uses, industrial uses cannot compete. So I, you know, I've expressed my concerns about this. I am pleased to see that, should they provided this information after pushing, I am pleased to see that there is space set aside for industrial uses. I think that that's a good thing that's come of this process. Presumably, if they, you know, receive this special permit, I think that the, we should be very clear, as has been said, that, you know, this is unique to this circumstance, so that it's, it's clear we have opportunities to revisit and review on a case-by-case basis, as has been mentioned by Chair Lago.
I want to reiterate what you said, Commissioner Ortiz. I am so grateful to the commission for, through the questioning, making it crystal clear to the applicant and its representatives that we are not a rubber stamp. Our vote is not to be taken for granted. One would have hoped, if not expected, that the applicant would have laid out the analysis that we just heard from Alexis about what the considerations are. I would not have expected an applicant perhaps to be as clear-eyed as we are about the pros and the cons. But certainly, that is what we will expect of other applicants, that they give serious discussion in their applications to the factors that the commission may consider, rather than providing information only at the last minute and only thanks to the keen probing by the commission. Commissioner Levin.
I guess I want to chime in here too, because along with Commissioners Deloos and Ortiz, I found Home Depot's testimony about the reasons for including the self-storage use just thoroughly alarming. Alexis has gone a long way toward rescuing the situation with the kind of thoughtful, articulate, compelling knitting together of the various factors that we should consider at this location that would have stood the applicant in very good stead if they, this is really our work to do as the way, as the permit is structured. But if they'd helped us down this path to begin with, we would have been in a very different situation. But Alexis, you did a magnificent job of pulling together some disparate information in a very compelling way. For me, there are two other considerations here. One is that if this permit is not approved, we have Home Depot saying that the alternative will be that is just more parking. So I don't know that that is a healthy outcome for the city, and I'm going to be weighing, you know, that reality against the, let's say Alexis's view of why this is a good use, never mind the applicant's in deciding which way to go. Because I think we have to face the possibility that, I mean, the reality that we're looking at this particular use, which has some benefit against nothing, which isn't really going to help the world. I also have to say, I really find the idea that they, I think it's, I think it's great that the self-storage operator finally crawled out of the woodwork and explained their business model and gave us some information about their intentions, which would have been super helpful to have had from the beginning. And it's also good that they made the gesture of including the industrial space in this building. But as I thought about it, first off, I looked at the plan they've shown, and it's really just a black blob at the very back of the ground floor, far from the loading docks. So I'm not sure how realistic that industrial space is. And the thing that I worry about, I mean, if there were an industrial user that could, if they really build this in an appropriate way and find a, you know, a small startup or, you know, somebody who could really use this as industrial space, good on them. But I think there are a lot of risks attached to it. I also think it's a bit of a red herring, because what they're really doing is putting on the table the amount of space that they would have to provide if this was in SubArea 1, where a self-storage space is as of right if you provide 25% of the ground floor. So we don't want to create a pattern where, it's very intentional that there's a difference between SubArea 1 and SubArea 2 for this special permit. And we don't want to create a situation where an applicant in SubArea 2 can sort of backdoor their way into an as-of-right situation by putting some industrial space on the table. So in my own considerations, I'm completely discounting the role of that industrial space. I think we need to look at this on the terms of the special permit as we have it in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a really helpful distinction. Commissioner Ropeshad.
Yeah, I just want to really just take a moment to just thank the CPC staff and the commission for the role that they played in this. I really feel that they did an outstanding job of getting back to us and pushing on the applicant to get the information that we needed. I plan on seeing a lot more during Wednesday's votes. I just wanted to just take a second just to thank them for the service that they did.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Okay, thank you for another very useful, informed discussion on this. Appreciate it. And back to you, Ryan.
Okay. Also scheduled for decisions on Wednesday are 375 Lighthouse Avenue and Edgewood Avenue, both in Staten Island. For this, for November 18th, 2020, staff are preparing a report for the PS48 landmark. There was a briefing package in this week's package. I just wanted to see if there's any further questions on that. Okay. So for post-hearing follow-up, Connie Chan is here to discuss 1501, 1555, 60th Street rezoning. Connie?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is a private application by 152933 60th Street LLC for a zoning map change and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of three buildings containing approximately 102 dwelling units, including 32 units of affordable housing and approximately 32,000 square feet of commercial space in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 12, excuse me. This application was certified on January 6th, and the public hearing was held on October 21st. Next slide. The project area is comprised of 20 tax lots located in the southwest portion of Community District 12 and Borough Park, near the border with Community District 11. Next slide. So here is an aerial photo showing the project area that's outlined in yellow with the three buildings comprising the development site outlined in red, labeled A, B, and C. The project area falls to the north and south side of 60th Street between 15th and 16th Avenues, with the open rail cut to the Bay Ridge branch of the Long Island Railroad along the southern border. Next slide. In response to a question that was posed at the public hearing regarding the status of Lot 62, which is located on Block 5509, that's the lot that's located in between the two proposed buildings, A and B, the applicant had stated in their application materials that the one-story warehouse building located on that lot was vacant, and that was based on field visits made during the course of 2017 and 2018, when the application materials were being prepared. However, based on recent site visit, it appears that that warehouse building is now occupied by a medical supply facility. Next slide. Also, as a follow-up to the public hearing, I want to clarify the differences between the mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH, option 1 and option 2, with respect to the total amount of floor area that is subject to the affordable housing requirement. Option 1 requires that 25% of the residential floor area serve households that average 60% of the area median income. And option 2 requires that 30% of the residential floor area serve households that average 80% of the area median income. So this requirement relates directly to the percentage of residential floor area in a development and not to the number of units necessarily, but they are typically roughly proportional. Next slide. The department would like to articulate some of the key components of the land use rationale that we feel supports the proposed rezoning to an R7A C24 district in the project area, specifically the proximity to transit, street characteristics, and existing zoning and built form. Next slide. So firstly, the project area is located in close proximity to two subway lines. The 62nd Street Station of the D train is located approximately one block west at the intersection of New Utrecht Avenue and 61st Street. And the New Utrecht Station of the N train is located approximately two blocks southwest at New Utrecht Avenue and 63rd Street. And you can see the entrances to those stations are marked with the red dots on the left-hand side of this map. In addition, the B9 bus connects Bay Ridge to Kings Plaza and has stops along 60th Street, including stops at 15th Avenue and 16th Avenue. 60th Street serves as a local east-west corridor. And the B9 bus, which again runs along 60th Street, ranks 34 out of all routes in the entire city, with a weekday ridership of nearly 14,000 riders from 2019 data. Second, the characteristics of the streets surrounding the project area. Wide streets are those mapped at a width of 75 feet or more, and compared to narrow streets, developments that are located on wide streets can accommodate more density and more height. In this case, the project area is located on blocks bordered by 60th Street, 15th Avenue, and 16th Avenues, all of which are mapped at a width of 80 feet, making them wide streets. Regarding the existing zoning and built form, the project area is located in an M11 district, and it's surrounded by R5 districts to the west, to the north, and to the east, with the exception of an R6A district mapped to the south of the Long Island Railroad right-of-way, which is shown here in red. And with regard to the neighboring R5 district, adjacent to the project area, specifically the one that's kind of directly north of the proposed development sites, buildings A and B, we'll note that the underlying rear yard requirements of the proposed R7A district and the existing R5 district would require that newly-built properties within each of these districts maintain a 30-foot rear yard. Based on aerial diagrams of the residential buildings that are directly adjacent to the project area to the north in that R5 district, it appears that the majority of existing homes have a rear yard that is approximately 35 feet in depth. The underlying zoning requirement would therefore result in a minimum distance of 60 feet between buildings in the R7A district and in the R5 district to the north. As I mentioned at the pre-hearing review session, the applicant noted that the 2003 rezoning that mapped the R6A district to the south of the project area had a significant frontage along 61st Street, which is a narrow street mapped at 60 feet wide. And I will also note that in addition to being a narrow street, 61st Street does not serve as a primary east-west corridor in the same way that 60th Street does. Next slide. While we feel that the land use rationale is relatively robust, we recognize that the density permitted by the proposed rezoning to an R7A district, which would allow 4.6 FAR with mandatory inclusionary housing, would set a precedent in the immediate area. However, there are a number of existing buildings in the surrounding area with densities of 4.0 or greater. These include a number of older residential buildings along 15th Avenue that extend north of 58th Street, which are shown in the yellow shaded area at the top right-hand corner of this diagram, as well as manufacturing and commercial buildings located two blocks south, also along 15th Avenue, which is shaded in yellow at the bottom of this diagram. In addition to the land use rationale, we would like to note that affordable housing is a key issue in this area. It's been the top issue listed in Community District 12 Statement of Needs for several years, and this issue is also evidenced by a number of indicators, including the fact that 60% of households are rent burden versus 45% of households for the borough. 27% of residents live under the poverty threshold compared to 21% for the borough. And the department believes that this is an area where it is particularly appropriate and desirable to support transit-oriented development and new opportunities to provide meaningful amounts of permanently affordable housing. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Connie. Vice Chernockles.
Thank you. Connie, I raised a question on Lot 62. So you don't know whether or not there was any attempt to make that a part of the assemblage along that, that side of the strip?
It is not applicant-owned. I do not know if there were prior conversations that the applicant had with that particular property owner as to whether or not to assemble.
Make for a better.
And Connie, would you be able to reach out to the applicant to ask?
Absolutely. We can follow up on that question.
Thank you. Commissioner Deloos.
I appreciate the follow-up, Connie, and I appreciate you talking about the percent rent burden and the percent in poverty. I would just say that I think both of those, you know, data points probably also lend themselves to mapping MIH option 1 over option 2.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I, and I continue to have concerns about the amount of retail that we're locating on a side street, even though I hear your rationale. You know, added what effectively feels like a dead end with some, what I see is lack of visibility. I don't think this is the wisest place to put retail. There are other places where we would set retail up for success, but I just don't think it's here.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, back to you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, the final item. Just want to see if there are any further questions on 265 Front Street. We had a pretty robust discussion of that at the last review session. Not seen any. That concludes our agenda.
Except for one important message, I assume that everyone on the commission has already voted, but as we have people listening in, just an urge to vote, it is just one of the tenants of our democracy. And with that, goodbye.
Thank you. See you Wednesday.